Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the meeting of the Southfield City Council, our regular meeting for February 25th, 2013. I would ask that you have cell phones and you put it on vibrate or turn it off at this time. And Ms. Banks, would you call the role play?
Thank you. Mr. Fracassi?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Here.
Ms. Jordan is not present in the meeting. Mr. Liam?
Here.
Mr. Maugh?
Here.
Ms. Seymour?
She indicated she was coming. Back on your back.
Mr. Cyber?
Here.
You have five numbers.
All right, thank you. Would you all please rise and pledge a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all? Thank you, everyone. Mayor, and I'll scoot down there. Please join me, Mr. Ray. We have a joint resolution honoring the Delta Sigma Theta sorority. And I see lots of reds.
I'm just honored to stand here today to give recognition to one of the organizations that is an international organization and one that I'm proud to be a member of. And tonight, this is a joint resolution that's being presented by the council and myself to Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated. So can I please ask the officers to come forward and then I'm going to ask them out to Thor Ward's to join me and take a picture after the briefing.
And one of you to, uh, Mark Fisher.
Yeah. Good evening. I'm Marcy Griffin, President of Southfield Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta.
Good evening. My name is Keisha Hume. I'm the second Vice President of the chapter.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dinida Wembush and I am the first Vice President of Southfield Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the council, this is a significant year for sometimes referred to DST, but I expect to represent Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated.
I know how my glasses look, so. We can hear me. I actually can have my own. But Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, 100th anniversary, whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc. is a private nonprofit organization whose purpose is to provide assistance and support through established programs in local communities throughout the world and whereas the constituents of more than 200,000 predominantly black college educated women, the sorority currently has over 900 chapters located in the United States, England, Japan, Tokyo, and Okinawa, Germany, Virgin Islands, Bermuda, Bahamas, and the Republic of Korea. And whereas the sorority was founded in 1913 by 22 students at Howard University who wanted to use their collective strength to promote academic excellence, to provide scholarships, to provide support for the underserved, to educate and stimulate participation in the establishment of positive public policy, and to highlight issues and provide solutions for problems in their communities. And whereas the National Organization of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority will celebrate their 100th anniversary this year while the Southfield Alumni Chapter will celebrate its 29th anniversary as the 730th Alumni Chapter that is officially founded on the number 17, 1944. Whereas the major programs of the sorority are based upon the organization's five-point program, trust, trust rather, economic development, educational development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement. Whereas since its establishment, the Southfield Alumni Chapter has worked steadfastly to distinguish itself as one of the premier public service organizations in the community, gaining recognition for its achievements by the sorority on the regional and national level and by the community on the local level. Whereas the Southfield Alumni Chapter has grown from a group of 31 charter members to a membership of more than 300, a nominal women. Five original committees have grown to more than 30 committees dedicated to promoting sisterhood, scholarships, and service throughout the city of Southfield and the state of Michigan. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and the council, the city of Southfield, county of Oklahoma, state of Michigan, do hereby recognize and congratulate Delta Sigma Theta Sorority on achieving their 100th anniversary as a nonprofit Greek lettered sorority comprised of college educated women who perform outstanding community service. Be it further resolved that we, the mayor and the city council, convey our collective appreciation and commendation to the many outstanding women of the Southfield Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority on their 29th anniversary as one of the premier chapters of this exemplary national community service organization dated February 25th, 2013, and is signed by the mayor and members of the Southfield City Council.
I wanted to add a personal touch. Being a member of Delta Sigma Theta is a call to action. It's an organization, it's a pledge, it's a lifelong commitment of sisterhood. But one of the things that many of you have personally been touched or you're aware of is that Delta Sigma Theta makes sure when they're in a community that their presence is known. They have done so many positive things we have to make sure that this community is strong. When we touch the lives of young women and young men, we provide help there. We're committed to the educational outcome of this community. And so as the mayor of this city, I'm proud tonight to present this plaque, award of recognition, the key to the city, presented to Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, Southfield Alumni Chapter, in honor of the centennial founding of our sorority, and is presented by your Thor Ward mayor, Mr. Liam.
And on behalf of the sorority, I just want to say thank you. This is truly an honor and we will truly use this key to serve the city as we have been doing. Nothing will change, but now we have a key. And this is one of, we are honored actually to be here and to stand in front of you and to be honored to be such a man. And I'm going to thank the over 300 of my sisters and sisters that have made it possible. But again, thank you to the city council, to our mayor, to Mr. Liam. So, thank you very much.
Ladies, let us come over and raise the lawn here. And I think we can all get in now. If I don't, I'm going to die. I did, I'm going to die. Where's yours? You're always looking forward. Stand under the toes.
Congratulations, ladies, and thank you very much for all you do for the community.
Mr. President, if I had, you know, I have a lot of friends out here tonight, so I would have been in big trouble if I had to come from Delphiree tonight. But I know what a force you are in the community in terms of charitable action, educational action, political awareness, and we are richer as a community, perhaps such a strong chapter of the Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated.
And I would add that in terms of community service, I see so many faces of sorority sisters that I know who wear multiple hats in the community, whether they're active in their neighborhood associations, Martin Luther King hat for, the Dem Club, the Park and Garden Club, you name it, tutoring at other schools, on and on. You truly live up to your creed. Just, Mr. Liam?
Yes. What I'd like to say is, I'm not going to give the whole thing to you. I'm just going to say you have the most beautiful women here tonight.
Mr. Liam, he does very high expectations. Okay, Mayor, we have the police chief next.
Yes.
Chief Hawkins, if you would come up. And you're here to tell us, take our oath for the Southfield Safe Streets Pledge.
Yes, and good evening, council president and council members, and mayor, and to the officials and members of the community. I'm here this evening to give a brief overview of a key public safety initiative that is designed to enhance the safety and security of residents and visitors in the city of Southfield. This initiative is called the Safe Streets Pledge. And here's a brief background project. The police department, like every other city department in Southfield, regularly assesses internal operations to ensure that service delivery is in line with community expectations. And the community has made it very clear to the police department that traffic-related issues are a serious concern. In fact, over 60% of the cost of service to the police department are traffic complaints. To put that number into context, the second highest call for service is in ours, at 13%. No other call for service exceeds 5%. The most common traffic complaints we get are speeders, traffic sign violators, traffic signal violators, and distracted drivers. Typically, our response to such concerns and such complaints is to simply write tickets. Typically, we would saturate an area with police officers, write the appropriate number of citations, and move to another house site, if you will. And what often happens is months later or sometime later, the problem resurfaces and we have to return and take the appropriate action again. We found that that is a highly inefficient and a reactive response, so we wanted to do something different to address this issue. And so we developed a more proactive, education-based approach in which the community and the police department work together as partners in order to make the streets in Southfield safe. And here's how this program works. The police department provides easily accessible information that educates the community on traffic laws, statistics, traffic safety tips. This information is available on the city's website, on the homepage, www.cityofsouthfield.com. Under the highlights section, there's a link titled Safe Streets Pledge. That link will take you to information on aggressive driving, seatbelt use, distracted driving, school bus safety, laws regarding the use of cell phones while driving a vehicle, and much, much more. The information raises the awareness of the dangers of bad driving behaviors and the adverse effects that such behaviors have on the community as a whole. Members of the community are then asked to make a pledge, to make a formal pledge, to drive cautiously and courteously, to obey traffic laws, and to avoid distracted driving. In addition, those who make the pledge are encouraged to ask family members, friends, and neighbors to visit the website and make that same commitment. The police department will then use an intelligence-based approach in redeploying officers, an approach in which technology is used to identify the most appropriate areas for traffic enforcement. This initiative accomplishes several things. It provides increased visibility in our neighborhoods, around our schools, and in high-press, in high-volume streets and intersections. It allows the police department and members of the community to partner together in efforts to address a serious community issue. It raises community awareness of the dangers of bad driving behaviors, and this will lead to safer streets in the city of Southfield. I thank you all for your time this evening, and I encourage the members of this community to join us in participating in the Safe Streets Pledge. Thank you.
Chief, now I read in the newspaper that you were going to swear a sentence at night. So I don't want to disappoint anybody. It's sort of, we had to raise our right hand and.
Well, council president, I'll leave that to you. How you want to handle that stuff?
But I don't have a bed, so. All right, we can go online and do the pledge correctly.
Absolutely.
Let me do this, Mr. Chairman. I could do mine already. I think you all have one of your packets. That's such an important thing. We get so many emails on people go through stop signs, speed through subdivisions, not adhering to any of the signs, avoiding different streets, especially in the summertime, that it's just an awareness program, and I think it's so important for this community. As you said, chief, those people who have, yes, and friends that stop at your house, let them know that we're in that neighborhood and we're looking for you, because that's the way it has to be to stop with, you know, going through stop signs, not coming to complete stop, speeding, they're clearly on that street. There are too many kids right there. And I don't know.
So chief, I'm going to hand you mine. Extra points for Mr. Fracassi.
As long as you stay in the light.
All right, council and mayor and, we're all under pressure now, Mr. President. Mr. Fracassi's raised the bar.
Mr. President?
Yes.
The chief, if we would stand, if you don't have your pledge card, we'll give it to you and we can take our pledge. I'll administer it to you.
And I'll read the pledge.
Mr. President, can I say something to you before I hold it?
Yes, you may, Mr. Fracassi. Or we're saying you have to.
And here's the Safe Streets Pledge. Residents and visitors alike are encouraged to take the Southfield Safe Streets Pledge and commit to do their part to keep our streets and communities safe. Take the pledge today and commit to drive you cautiously, the life you save could be your own. And if you pledge to obey all posted traffic signs and signals at all times.
Hey, we spoke to your team. We pledge.
Pledge to obey.
To obey.
All posted traffic signs and signals.
All posted traffic signs and signals.
At all times.
At all times.
Avoiding all cellphone use.
Avoiding all cellphone use.
Eating.
Eating.
Eating and drinking.
Eating and drinking.
Intoxication.
Intoxication.
And other distractions while driving.
And other distractions while driving.
Thank you.
Chief, the other day, chief, the other day, it was nighttime and I seen this car next to me and it had a television going, and then in the front seats, you see their faces lit up because they were texting, they were talking. So the whole car was lit up with all these faces, you know. And so it just proves that that sign that the freeway is really, they don't pay attention to it, and they only know how dangerous it is. It takes a couple seconds to put that cellphone up there and they're, you're missing the trick.
Yes. Mr. Liam?
On the way. Chief?
Yes.
Very good idea.
Thank you.
I like it. But let's go one step further. Let's send every one of these pledges to every single person and driver in the city of Southfield, and let's see if they'll take the pledge. Because as far as I've seen, they don't, they don't take pledges. They just speed and everything else, you can't stop them. So how do we, how do we get through to the people out there? I would suggest a sign on every corner, asking them to come to city hall and pledge their, their good driving methods or something like that. Let the people know what we're doing. Have I got a point?
That's the great stuff, when councilman and, we're still in the beginning stages of this initiative, and that is exactly one of the things that we're looking to do down the road, is how can we, how can we get the word out to the residents, the visitors, and the business owners in this community about this? How can we, how can we let everyone know about this?
How are we doing?
And so what you just mentioned is, is on radar. You know, how can we get this out to the households in the community? There's other public service type announcements that we have planned in the future for itself. So that's all on the radar.
Okay. Mr. Fraser, with that.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd just like to thank our new chief for thinking outside the box. You have some pretty big shoes to fill. I know our past chief made some great strides in keeping the crime down here in Southfield. And when you took over, the very first Asian Citizens Academy, and now this, it's pretty obvious to me that you're not only thinking about keeping the city safe, but you're doing it in a, in a way that is, I think, unique to this area. I've not heard any other community that has come up with something like this, so you're off to a running start, and I certainly appreciate it, and I'm glad I got you.
Thank you.
I wish I'd gotten a license plate of the car I saw in 10 miles playing solitaire while driving.
Yeah, we could just add, if you need any assistance, just give me a red light and book a ticket, it's not relevant. I'd be delighted.
All right.
Thank you, chief. All right, next, this is a bittersweet occasion. We are, would like to call forward our retired emergency manager and longtime Southfield firefighter, Frank Koots. We've appreciated all your years of service, and tonight we'd like to say a few words. Madam, mayor?
Yes. Tom, this is a real audience. Many of you know that in the city of Southfield, I charted, we have an emergency management director. Not finding an emergency manager director. We've had the support of having leadership that has been a second to a very high commitment. I was proud to sign the contract of this young man. I want to tell you a little bit of history about Frank Koots. He was hired as a firefighter in 1974. He obtained his advanced medical technician status in 1977. He was promoted to sergeant paramedic on 11/89, and became a lieutenant in 1990. He was promoted to captain paramedic coordinator in 1994, and he retired in 1999. And at that time, he was appointed as the emergency management director. I've had the pleasure of working with him for most of those years and knowing how he is respected in the community. Many young people grew up with him, the teaching of our different health and life safety programs that we have in Southfield. He has been the one to do this. He could speak for hours, and sometimes that's the problem. But we can exchange that and speak for hours about his professionalism and his dedication that he's brought to the city. And at this time, on behalf of the city, I would like to present to you a token of my appreciation. Frank, you've given us so much. This is, this is more just making sure that while you plan so much in our hearts, I want you to hang this in your home and just look at it as you can gauge the city 39 years apart. And we appreciate it, and we, we're sending you home. We're sending you home to this able-bodied woman who has reinforced to me that she does love you and will let you come home. And that I just wanted to, wanted to give this to you as just a token of my appreciation. Thank you for everything you've done. Thank you for standing beside her, and you are a great man, and I tell you, thank you so much for choosing Southfield to do great things.
Frank, the mayor didn't mention that you've got tremendous record on one minors.
Most of them repeatable. Mayor, thank you for those kind words and the flag. Very much appreciated. Through the chair, thank you, mayor and council, and all city officials for acknowledging my service to the city. Thanks also to those present this evening here in chambers and watching on cable 15. I also appreciate this opportunity to express my gratitude and recollections, as I wish to. I'm wearing my uniform jacket for the last time. I'm on a uniform and that I have a Southfield tie on, and it's a special occasion, and it was given to me by a special lady. Before starting as emergency management director, I worked with the Southfield Fire Department. I started, as the mayor said, as a firefighter on August 19th, 1974, and I retired as the captain paramedic coordinator after 25 years on December 11th, 1999. Actually, I don't know how this will play, as you can see it. This is a picture of me and my mother the day I received my firefighter certificate. It looks like I'm standing in a field. This is actually where the pavilion is now. This was before the pavilion was built. So that's me and my mother, 40, almost 40 years ago. Prior to retirement, I knew I wanted to stay with the city of Southfield if they would have me. Donald Fracassi, the mayor at the time, must have seen something in me when I asked him to consider me for the emergency management director's position. I was qualified then based on my related knowledge and experience, and apparently he saw something in me and he eventually agreed. And I started on December 13th, 1999, after two days off. ninety-nine after two days off. Uh, emergency management at the time wasn't a household word. Frankly, although Southfield was doing more than most with emergency management, there was a little buy-in or acceptance of our emergency management concept from our residents or from the police or fire, who we now refer to as public safety. Emergency management is a government-provided service to assist at an overwhelming disaster event. Emergency management is an organized guide to manage an overwhelming incident. Emergency management is the means of accessing more and specialized resources needed by the incident and emergency management stays to assist when other agencies leave the scene. We were pretty innocent back then at the turn of the century. Residents thought a major disaster event was never going to happen here, it was never going to happen to me. Public safety, police and fire and EMS believed they could handle anything that happened in their jurisdiction. I was part of that mentality in, in the fire service. We had a thing called Mutual Aid, but we were hesitant to ask for help. We took care of our own backyard. That innocence we had was lost. We lost it at eight forty-eight AM and nine oh six AM on September eleventh, two thousand and one. The world and the rules changed also. Pre-nine eleven, the disasters striking America, the ones we read about like hurricanes in Florida, tornadoes in Texas and fires out west were somehow dealt with. Sure, the federal government using FEMA sent help as did private relief agencies like the Red Probst Salvation Army. Essentially got addressed and resolved, but often it wasn't always an effective and coordinated effort. Lessons learned from nine eleven and the overwhelming disasters that seem to come with more frequency these days have made the emergency management concept a necessity today. Let me recap some career recollections of the times we shared and how Southfield emergency management evolved and contributed to the safety and quality of life in our community. My first day as EM, uh, EM, emergency management director, I was shown my office. I was given an unfinished space shared by two others. I shared a desk with Colonel Joe Blaser, the emergency management volunteer. I assumed the duties of the emergency management director and the supervision of one person, Colonel Blaser, and also of the volunteers. Volunteers, by the way, are, are a necessary component in responding to disasters and Southfield was foreseen in establishing a cadre of volunteers long before other communities and the federal government deemed it beneficial. The uniforms for the volunteers were in boxes on the floor. They were mismatched and in disrepair. Also in boxes were the cannibalized amateur radio equipment parts removed from the former volunteer radio room in the basement of City Hall. They weren't salvageable. The emergency management program files and volunteer personnel records were given to me in three boxes. I was given a book with posted notes in it to follow up on. The book was our emergency operation plan or disaster plan. I learned the mandate, the emergency management mandate and my responsibilities from the city charter and from the federal act three ninety, also from the Michigan State Police Emergency Management Division who administered emergency management in State of Michigan. I used to start to be sure, but I was so very fortunate to have great leaders who wanted the emergency management program to succeed and who supported my efforts. From that point on, I had no reason to fail. Under other circumstances, this would be the time or place to go into detail, but I wouldn't be here to miss if I didn't recall some of the highlights that we accomplished together. On December thirty-first of nineteen ninety-nine, emergency management activated for twenty-four hours to monitor any incidents generated by Y two K. Turned out it wasn't a big deal, but it was a good exercise. We established emergency management as a standalone department following the nationally-accepted government format and that gave us legitimacy in the emergency management community. A recommendation to operate a grant-funded emergency management program is that its director obtain a professional emergency management certificate or P V M. I attended two hundred and forty hours of classes in Lansing and passed the exam and Southfield emergency manager at its first professional emergency manager. With grant money, we changed the emergency operation plan to the, uh, a different format, the emergency action guidelines, a simpler way to do the same thing. We responded to the nine eleven incident locally by meeting with city officials in a conference room. We didn't have an emergency operations center at the time. Emergency management volunteers stood guard around the city hall complex as we didn't know what threats may happen locally. Post-nine eleven, the federal government began an active program of, of providing no cost, no sheer grants to meet the newly-recognized threat of terrorism. We applied for every grant opportunity available to help primarily prepare our public safety agencies to meet this new and active threat. Grants were obtained from many city departments also, not just the police department and fire department. Grants were also obtained for any eligible community church, business or organization. One memorable grant was to purchase thermal imaging cameras for the fire department. At one residential fire since then, the cameras were used to locate victims and save lives. The grants went on for several years and provided for the hiring of a grand administrator, Ms. Pam Bates. She did a great job, she's still a city employee. Over the years, we recorded a grant income of nearly nine hundred thousand dollars. The money was used to provide training and purchase equipment to prepare our public safety staff and residents for the threat of terrorism. A specific emergency management mandate is to educate and train our city staff and residents on how to plan and prepare for disasters. The Department of Homeland Security says eight percent of your jurisdiction, your residents, should receive disaster preparedness training. We started ongoing programs of education through our disaster classes, our Skywarn Spotter classes, which, by the way, uh, Wednesday at six PM in the library is going to be, uh, this year's Skywarn Spotter class, hope you can attend. Uh, and through our CERT classes, CERT, C R T, stands for Community Emergency Response Team and that's an organized way for volunteers to assist in disasters. We documented having trained nearly four thousand persons in helping themselves and others in disasters. We also gave away two hundred, two thousand disaster kits which were grant-funded. CERT reminds me that one of our city CERT teams, D P W team, competed in the first ever State of Michigan CERT Olympics in Dearborn and came home with the gold. Southfield won first place in the state of Michigan. We also started an EM website and with grant money, we purchased a trailer mounted generator to ensure that the emergency operations center would have power. We never had backup power before, but to ensure we had power in case of an outage. Emergency management activated for forty hours to assist at the blackout of two thousand and three. Emergency management activated for the July two thousand and five one-day blackout. Emergency management activated for two hundred days to assist Katrina evacuees who migrated to Southfield. We were recognized as the leader in the Detroit area for the local Katrina relief effort. We established the emergency operations center in the basement of Parks and Rec. No budget money was used to start the E O C. Almost everything was grant-provided, donated, donated or acquired. I'll let you guess what acquired means. The emergency operations center is also the training and monthly meeting room for the volunteers. We believe the training room is a city asset. It's ours to share, so we made it available to any city or private agency who has an emergency management or civic relay and reason to use it. The emergency management training meeting room is the busiest training room in the city. CPR and first aid is taught there. Fire department and police department meet and train there. Regional rank boards meet there. That, that helps us. County agencies meet there. Safety meetings are held there. Once when a resident couldn't afford anything else, a funeral wake was held there as we wanted to help. When the human services department had to move out of their building while it was being remodeled, they couldn't find space on city property. Renting space and setting them up elsewhere would have cost thousands per month. We did not hesitate to, to have them share our space as it was only supposed to be for six to twelve weeks. It took sixteen months. We were happy to help to minimize and to help and to minimize our city costs. Emergency communications are a requirement in emergency management. We started an amateur radio group with grant monies to purchase equipment and the installation of antennas. Emergency management volunteers went to school to become amateur radio operators. Amateur radios, sometimes called ham radios, are the emergency means of communication if all else fails. Southfield's leadership in establishing the amateur radio service has led three other Oakland County communities to follow suit. Someday Oakland County will have an even more extended amateur radio capability benefiting ourselves and the county and Southfield started it. The Southfield Emergency Management Volunteer Program is as active as ever. You see our volunteers at civic events ensuring the safety of the attendees. For over eighteen years, emergency management operated the police parking enforcement program. We saw it as an opportunity, opportunity to improve the service to our persons with special needs community. We began to concentrate our efforts on performance. Our performance was recognized by many thankful letters received and with the presentation of an appreciation award from the Disability Network of Oakland and Combe. To do parking enforcement, enforcement like we wanted to, it was taking too much time from our emergency management ma- mandate. To reach its potential as a service to the community, we recommended that parking enforcement be moved out of emergency management. Today, as you know, Jerry Witkowski and his staff are doing a great job of serving with even greater levels of performance. Annually, the volunteers donate several thousand hours of service to the community. We have two volunteers with fifty years of service each, Colonel Joe Blaser and Major John Gapon. We have several volunteers who also have thirty years or more of service. Over the years, the volunteer program has been recognized for their services and performances. Both President Bush and President Obama have bestowed the Presidential Volunteer Award on our program two years running. One year, the Michigan Emergency Management Association, or M E M A, awarded the Southfield Emergency Management the Program of the Year Award as Best in the State. And in another year, I was grateful to be awarded the Program Director of the Year. Emergency management budget was always adequate. When the city was faced with financial challenges, we wanted to do our part by economizing where we could without allowing service to suffer. Over re- over recent years, with a EM reduction in staff, the relocation of the parking enforcement program and a recent restructuring effort, emergency management has reduced its budget by over two-thirds. On that note, it was our recommendation that emergency management restructured, be restructured to the form it is today with our new director, Bill Johns. We have consolidated services and I believe enhanced some of our capabilities and of course reduced expenses. By the way, Bill Johns will do a great job. You may be thinking, what's this got to do with Frank's retirement? I didn't want to sound like a scorecard, but you only get one chance to recap the accomplishments of a career. And I am sensitive about my message sounding, uh, the way it's coming through. It's not about Frank, it's about what we all did together. In closing, I have many to thank, too many to mention here. Remembering just a few? Councilman Pracassi? Thank you for giving me the chance to serve. Jim Churet? It was Jim who taught me how to get things done in the system and also how to make a nickel and a TV dinner last two weeks. Mayor, Mayor Lawrence? She was, she believed in me and gave me the support, guidance and room to perform and achieve. I thought I'd end with her once or twice as I wasn't hearing what I wanted to hear. I was doing emergency management things and thought my way was best. While standing at attention, she took the time to explain there was a bigger goal in public service. This, this goal was how to react and how to deal with people in need. I saw that and applied it from then on. It was great advice. Thank you, Mayor. After nearly thirty-nine years, too much to recall, too much to say, too many people to thank. In brief, I've got the city of Southfield and its residents to thank for giving me the chance to help others. Serving and working here has made me a better person, has made for an improved standard of living and a secure future for my family. I also became a better speller. My saying for many years has been, the goal in a career is to get out alive. So far, so good. Thank you coworkers, you'll never be recognized enough for all you do. Thank you residents for your support. Thank you friends. Thank you, my wife Carrie, for giving up your time with me so I can help others. Thank you, Southfield.
I think I'm, uh, I'm going to, uh, call up, uh, one of the, uh, representatives of the, uh, emergency management, Tim Workis, to say a few words, a few words.
Hi, guys.
To the council, to the mayor, uh, the volunteers, uh, Frank mentioned volunteers, but here's some of them. Uh, he's frank as right, uh, when he took over in December of two nineteen ninety-nine, he had his little team in the office and now we've, we've got something that we're proud of. Uh, as Charles Diggs said, it's been the best of times, it's been the worst of times. Uh, we took up the election and we, we did get to a Big Mac in front. But, uh, but the volunteers, we wanted to come out. Uh, line up gentlemen, we're going to give you one final salute as we drop it. The salad, present art. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
May I introduce that new, uh, emergency manager? Why don't you come up with Frank and the mayor, why don't you bring our new, uh, new manager out there? Yeah.
Very capable and carrying out the job. At an earlier meeting, we introduced our, um, I think we did introduce him again. How are you, sir?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Congratulations, Director Coops, and you got some big shoes to fill.
And, uh, Mr. Coops, would you like to approach the council, the council chairman?
Absolutely.
And then we're going to get on to other business.
emergency management group the volunteers for the job they've done. I know they sort of got up and left, but, uh, you know, I think, I think those of you that might, uh, like to know that, that this group is the Civil Defense of Southfield and, and civil defense in Southfield was started and why it was, um, the top team in Oakland County, the State, was that at eleven mile road in Franklin Road, uh, we- at the State was that at eleven mile road in Franklin Road, we had silos carrying the missiles, our missiles that protected all of North Carolina. And that was how we became really involved in Civil Defense and now Emergency Group. And so lift that great tradition. Old ham operators used to be downstairs just below this facility here, and it was run out of this area. I tell a story of what the first... After Colonel Becker, we had a guy that was a hooky, a better hooky joint out of the basement. So, yeah, there's all kinds of things that occurred over the years. Didn't last long.
Okay. We're going to move on to appointments, and Chair of the Board and Commission Committee, Ms. Jordan, out of town this evening. We're going to ask Mr. Moss to introduce the reappointments and appointments that we have on the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The Boards and Commissions Committee met last week, and we are making a favorable recommendation for reappointment and appointment to the council, so if you'd like to make a motion, I can. One at a time or all together?
Why don't you make them one at a time, different, different?
I move to reappoint to the Board of Review Eric Edwards.
Sure. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Edwards, are you in the house?
I'm here.
All right. Continue, Mr. Edwards.
I will move for the reappointment to the Commission Unseen or Adult Jill Manning.
Sure. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I don't think Miss Manning can come this evening. All right. Ms. Lam, come on, more.
I move the appointment to the Veterans Commission of Rodney A. Cruthers.
Sure.
Is Mr. Cruthers in? Come on, sir. And are all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The clerk will swear you in, sir, and then we've...
May I?
Yes, you may. And then we'll have you come up and shake our hand. Mr. Lam?
Yes. I've read your application, and I'd like to know something about you as a veteran. Can you tell us something, what you started?
Absolutely. To the council. My name is Ryan Corrigan. I served in the United States Marine Corps, served in Vietnam, and also was active in starting the Veterans Organization for the U.S. Treasury Department, where I worked for over thirty years. But as a veteran, and I belong to many organizations, I believe that Southfield has a very strong Southfield Veterans Commission. And I've been here for twenty-two years. This is one of the organizations that I want to be a part of. As a veteran, I think I can advocate in many areas for Southfield veterans.
Thank you, good sir. I hope you... I hope you change some of the things that are happening in the veterans' field, and I hope you do something new in our Veterans Commission. I'm a veteran too from the Second World War. Now, I went through the bill too, but I think our Veterans Commission needs an update, and I hope you may be able to manage it. Thank you for helping. Good thanks.
Vice President Hyatt, please. We hereby declare that you support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this State, to the Southfield City Charter, and the U.S. Police Performability on the Veterans Commission, in accordance with the Southfield County of Oakland, State of Michigan, in accordance with the Southfield Area Development Commission.
All right, next on our agenda, we have one thousand minutes to approve. Mr. Chairman, please.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the regular meeting minutes of January fourteenth to August thirteenth.
Need support?
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Fraser and supported by Mr. Moss to approve the minutes from January fourteenth, two thousand thirteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move on to our consent agenda. This evening, we have eight items, which have been studied either in council subcommittee or at a previous study meeting by the council. Let me go through them very quickly. Item consented in A is the authorization for the city to participate in the road and bridge improvement project called resurfacing of Eight Mile Road from Southfield to just east of Telegraph Road. And then we'll be also include the removal and replacement of the bridge over Plum Creek, a tributary of the Rouge River. This project is very similar to the project that was undertaken last summer from Telegraph to the state limits on Eight Mile. So they're doing the next leg of Eight Mile Road. The total estimated cost of this project is eleven point two million, with the city share being two hundred and fifty-six thousand, the state share being one point eight million, and the federal aid portion being nine point two million. Funding for this project is provided in the two thousand twelve, thirteen major street budget in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and will be requested in a like amount for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen budget. Consent agenda D is a resolution approving the inclusion of the city's Southfields on the letterhead of the Oakland County Trails, Water, and Land Alliance. This is a show of support by the city for natural resource preservation and green infrastructure enhancement, which are included in the goals of Southfield Stormwater Management Master Plan, as well as the Master Plan of Parks and Recreation Department. This matter was discussed last week with council. Item C is approval for the fire and purchasing departments that solicited bids covering four replacement life support units. Expenditures are expected not to exceed seven hundred thousand, with funding provided within the equipment revolving fund set aside over the years for such replacements. Again, we discussed it at another meeting. Item D is the acceptance of the operating assistance in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars, the same as last year from SMART, that's the Southern Mobility Authority for Regional Transportation. These funds, the twelve thousand five hundred dollars, will be used for the fund of the city's TOS program, which is transportation for Southfield seniors. Consent item E is the award of bid in the amount of twenty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars to Woodward Printing, Pelletville, Lakeville, rather, Wisconsin, for printing of the Southfield Living Newsletter, which provides news and information on parks and recreation programs, events, and general city news. Funds are provided in this year's budget, in the city relations and parks budget, and will be requested in two thousand thirteen, fourteen budget as well. The bid has flat from last year's amount. Item F is a three-year contract extension with Waste Management Incorporated of Southfield effective July first, two thousand nine, for rubbish collection and disposal, composting and recycling services. This matter was reviewed extensively by the council finance committee and discussed with the mayor and council at the February eleventh meeting. There's good news here. The extension of this contract provides a three percent decrease in the current fee for one year and a fee structure in years two and three, yet there will be no net increase in the cost of the homeowner over the next three years in rubbish collection. In the deliberations on this matter, both service levels and prices have been a high level of satisfaction with Waste Management, like the city of Southfield, services provided is noted, as well as the fact that they are doing business in Southfield with offices on Eight Mile Road. Combined with an immediate price increase to our homeowners, we think this is a good deal. Item G is a low bid for paper towel and tissue products for use in the city's very free facility, and this goes to H P Products of Oakland, Michigan, for one-year period beginning in February twenty-fifth, in an amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars. The bid is essentially flat from last year, and funds are provided in the facility's maintenance budget for this year in net. And finally, item H is authorization to purchase three hundred tons of coal patch for street repairs in the amount not to exceed twenty-six thousand four hundred dollars from Saginaw asphalt paving of Saginaw Municipal. The most advantageous pricing was obtained by combining this, our bid, with the Oakland County bid to the materials. Funds are provided in this year's and next year's street and highway budgets. Is there anything that you'd like removed, council members?
Mr. Chairman?
Gentlemen.
One second, Mr. Lam, just a second. Yes, sir.
All right. I have a question about the A. The city was the principal that's ready. The reverse encouragement was called carbon fiber. That's correct, under that strike. That carbon fiber, and I remember Dr. Chang was there from Lawrence, and I was talking with him, that was supposed to last a lifetime. Now, why have we remained the same?
It's a different bridge. It's a different bridge. I'm talking about that. Through the chair. It's a bridge on Eight Mile Road, not on the drive into the Bridge Project, Bridge Street Road on Eight Mile. Just before East of Telegraph Road, where the Rouge Tributary crosses Eight Mile. Mr. Schrempf, you could add...
Yes, the carbon fiber.
This is a totally different bridge. It's a new bridge. This is not the bridge you're talking about on the hill. I didn't say that. Okay. Okay, then, Mr. Chairman.
Through the chair. Mr. Lam, this is corrected that the city was the leader, along with LTU, in promoting the carbon fiber. It is out of the experimental stage. Now, it has been proven to be cost-effective because of the combination of the drop in price, as well as the length of its lifetime and low maintenance cost. The carbon fiber won't be employed on this bridge. So, we worked with LTU on the bridge, street bridge, which was the first bridge built with this material, and now they're expanding it to other bridges within the state of Michigan, and this is one of them.
Okay. Mr. Pracassi, do you want to move?
No, I want to... Well, C, the... Why don't you comment on F and H?
You're asking to put a hold on Z?
C, E. Why don't you comment on F?
Okay. Why don't you comment on F, and then we'll vote on the other?
I would just like to thank the Waste Management Team that was negotiating with the city. I know it was really a tough competitive kind of agreement, and I just want to thank them for working with the city.
Gentlemen, thank you. I will entertain a motion then for consent agenda, item A, B, E, F, G, and H. I think you want to pull H. Did you say H as well? I'm sorry.
Uh, C and H as well, just a question.
Oh, sir. Thank you, Mr. Moss. Then I will entertain a motion for A, B, E, F, and G. It's a move to the Board. All right. It's a move by Mr. Moss, supported by Mr. Fraser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion opposed? Motion carries. All right. Mr. Pracassi, I'll go back to you.
And C. That is replacement on four life support units for the fire department. I talked to the fire chief before the meeting, talked to Mr. Churet. The request is really capped at some seven hundred thousand dollars, but being the chair of the finance committee, the amount of money, I would like to kind of set aside for at least a year. In other words, put that money in the bank for at least a year and go through the bidding process. I understand that by the time you get them ready and transferred for service, it's about eight months, a year and a half. Seven hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, and a bunch of time would be spent. I would just like to see a quick example, maybe get another year out of these units, patch them up, whatever we have to do to them, but just that, hopefully, we'll get them put together. I know that these things are very special vehicles, but we are really having a tight time balancing the budget, and that kind of money, I think we'd better save on the side for...
Through the chair.
Oh, wait a minute.
Mr. Lam, through the chair. An answer to Councilman Pracassi's concerns. First of all, we will come in under the seven hundred thousand, because the fire department is right now working on a joint bid process, which should bring the price down. Number two, I would like to commend the fire department for their patience, since we sent this back twice for further review. Number three, part of the reason for the price is the new safety equipment on this year's twenty thirteen models. It's the first year for these safety improvements, and we think that they more than justify the cost in terms of the safety of our personnel, as well as people in emergency situations being transported. So, this is the right time. It does take at least eight months to actually assemble one of each of these units, and we will do everything we can to work on the price, the fire department combined with our purchasing division. Those are some answers, I hope, to lay your concerns.
I don't know if you have an answer for that at this time, Mr. Schrempf, but do you have what the trade-in value would be on the four units that we're going to get rid of?
We're working on that as well.
Okay. Out of the...
Yes.
Prices should really go through there.
Yes.
That's fine.
Some of them will be reused for reserve units, but we will maximize whatever trade-in potential there is in the other units.
I would stress that this item, as it's written or presented to us tonight, is only a request to seek bids. It is not the actual purchase. And I don't see any reason to delay seeking bids. That doesn't mean that we're going to purchase, but I think we would have to be more informed to take action if we actually had hard quotes in front of us.
Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to stop the bidding process. I'm just bringing to council, the tension is that at seven hundred thousand dollars for four units...
a request to seek bids. It is not the actual purpose. And I don't see any reason to delay seeking bids. That doesn't mean that we're going to purchase, but I think we would have to be more informed to take action if we actually had hard quotes in front of us.
Mr. Chairman, I'm trying to stop the bidding process. I'm just bringing to council. The tension is that at $700,000 for four units is a lot of money.
It is a lot of money.
As you know, and what I've heard that we have in the bank is, you know, something that we could possibly use for a year, possible, but I'm not trying to stop the bidding process. I just want to make sure that we can get this down to something that's workable, undoable, and saves some money. D.
Hold on a second. Let's deal with this one first, before we go.
I'll move C.
It's a board.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Percassi to approve the seeking of bids for four replacement fire support units for the fire department and supported by Mr. Fraser. Discussion, Mr. Lance?
I don't understand what's happening there. Are you approving on C?
No, he's not. He's off.
Are you voting for tonight?
Yeah.
Or do I?
No, voting.
Okay, all right. I thought I.
I made the motion.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor upon Mr. Percassi's support by Mr. Fraser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's been approved. All right, going on to D, Mr. Percassi.
On the senior transportation, is there any way that, I know that Laiter Village does not participate in Smart. I don't think they voted for the funds for Smart, but is there any way that we could maybe look at partnering with Laiter on maybe providing transportation for their seniors as well and pick up some of the expense that we have with this specialized service?
Through the chair. We will explore that. One of the categories that we, matter of fact, we just completed our submission to the state for our E D I P, which is the program where you have to qualify for statutory state share revenues. We applied for the, under the coordination that you're talking about, services to other communities, cooperative efforts with other agencies, et cetera, and our application was accepted and we will receive full funding. However, we're always looking for new ideas, so we will explore the possibility.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move D.
It's a board.
Okay. We have the motion to approve the excessive grant of $12,594 from Smart for senior transportation made by Mr. Percassi, supported by Mr. Fraser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
On H, the question I have is for that slurry type filling that we use, Mr. Schratt, for parcels. Is that material the same material that we use for the coal patch? Is that a different kind of material?
Through the chair, Councilman Percassi. This is the traditional quote-unquote throw and go. This is what you have to use in the wintertime or in periods where we cannot use the Duro patcher. This is different material. It's the traditional material. Whenever we can, we use Duro patching because it's much more effective, lasts longer, and provides a better service.
So, when do we go into the Duro patching?
In the spring and summer and up to the fall.
And we have materials for that?
We do.
I think the weather has to be above 40 degrees for the Duro patch.
Okay. Are you moving?
I will.
Mr. President? All right. And it's been moved by Mr. Percassi, supported by Mr. Fraser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right. At this point, we're going to move on to public hearings. We have four public hearings this evening, and I'm going to turn it over to City Planner Crowe.
Thank you, through the chair. Our first public hearing is G P 1248, a special use review request by Giudita to allow group childcare home on property located at 29229 Everett Street, on the west side of Everett, between 12 Mile Road and Edwards. I have a brief video presentation of this.
G P 1248 is a special use request of Giudita Altanina to allow a group childcare home on the property located at 29229 Everett Street, on the west side of Everett, between 12 Mile Road and Edwards Avenue, Lot 244 of Meadow Vale Subdivision, Sidwell Parcel 2412, 246004, in Section 12 of the city. Subject property as well as the properties to the north, south, and east across Everett Street are Zoned R A Single Family Residential. The property to the west is Zoned R E Single Family Residential. With regard to the existing land uses, the subject property as well as the properties to the north, south, and east across Everett Street are developed single-family homes fronting Everett Street. The existing land use to the west is developed with the single-family homes fronting Edwards Avenue. The site at 8.17 acres of land, there's 60 feet of frontage on Everett Street and a depth of 122.33 feet. The special use request is to permit a group childcare home within the R A Single Family Residential zoning district. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the special use were the standards and conditions of Article V, Single Family Residential District, as it relates to group childcare homes. The proposal is in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan, noting moderate density of single-family floors and parcels. The petitioner is to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security.
Through the chair, just want to remind the council that this is the second group childcare home since the council adopted the special use requirements. We are recommending in favor for our registration dated February 25th. Councilwoman Jordan asked for some photos of the business, which I'm going to hand out to the council, and we have the applicant here to make a couple of comments. All right, floor, yours?
I'm Giudita Altanina, and right now I have family childcare in Everett Street, 29229.
Will you please speak up, please?
Okay. I have right now my family childcare in 29229 Everett Street, and I finished special education, and I'm a teacher, and I'm working with kids for more than 10 years.
Again, this is a special use permit. Anything else, Mr. Crowe?
I'll reserve my comments till after.
Okay. If not, you may have a seat in the front row, and I will declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to address the special use permit for 29229 Everett Street, please come Good evening, Mr. Mullin, your name is addressed for the record.
Mr. President, my name is Gerard Mullin. My address is GerardMullin2012@gmail.com. I would like to point out at this time that there is an error contained within council's legal notice for this public hearing. Council lists only one lot number, that is, lot number 2445, I'm sorry, 244, for Sidwell Parcel number 2412476004. The city assessor's records list two lot numbers, and not one lot number, for this Sidwell parcel number. The two lot numbers that are listed by the city assessor are lot number 244 and lot number 243. That is the south portion of lot number 243. The assessor's data can be easily verified right online via your smartphone, your PC, or your tablet, like I have in hand with the assessor's data. Check it out. Check it out. I would like to recommend at this time to this council that you bookmark the city assessor's database thing, so that in future, council can publish the correct information and not the wrong information in the legal notice.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on this public hearing? Ms. Gerald?
Pamela Gerald, P O Box 155, Southville, Michigan 48037. My telephone number is 248-352-9188, and residents, you know I am still a phone call away. I just want to ask a question. We keep bringing up these issues and bringing up special land use. I definitely like kids, but are we going to allow just all of this stuff in residential areas? We have zoning, we have ordinances, but we seem to just be making a lot of exceptions for some of these businesses. I am all for kids, used to go to the daycare and read to the kids, so I'm not against it. I'm concerned about the residential area and the traffic and how fast the traffic moves in the residential area. So, I have a couple of questions. Will there be a fence around the yard to keep the kids secure? How many kids will be in the daycare at one time? What will the hours be?
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council at this public hearing? If not, I declare the public hearing closed. Yes, Mr. Lance. Can we wait one second and let Mr. Crowe have a word? Then we'll get to ask our questions shortly.
Through the chair, as I stated, our recommendation, subject to our resolution, consideration by the council of 2013, which addresses a number of the concerns of Ms. Gerald, first of all, this is an existing family childcare facility which is licensed through the state and allows up to six children. The applicant is looking to expand to group childcare, which is licensed by the state for seven to 12 children. And as you recall, the state statute allows local zoning to require special land use for group childcare homes. Part of the purpose is to have public hearings to hear from neighbors about any existing problems. We have not had anybody show up at the planning commission meetings with any concerns about this.
It was a minute ago. Crowe, if I could interject right here. The reason we passed this ordinance was so that the city would have greater say in home childcare, which is a necessary function in our society, our community, and before they were unregulated.
That's true. And some of the provisions that we incorporated was making sure that we had a minimum of 35 square feet of outdoor activity, or a minimum 1,200 square foot outdoor play area, which is fenced in. The photos that I passed around shows the proposed fencing. And the hours of operation will be limited from 6:00 a.m. to approximately 5:30 p.m. But we do have extended hours where we prohibit pickup from 10:00 p.m. to the following 6:00 a.m. As far as the gentleman's comment about the legal notice, we believe the legal notice is correct. We have the proper address provided in our notice. Oftentimes, the assessor records have original plating numbers that have been consolidated or combined at a later date. So, that's the only discrepancy that I can see, but the proper address and the lot has been done fine.
Thank you. Mr. Lance?
I'll be the planner and answer my question.
Is there any other council, Mr. Moss?
Yeah, this is the second one that we've approved, or if it's approved, it will be the second one. The other one, I think, is on Rock Creek. Have there been any complaints in the neighborhood about that being in the neighborhood?
As I'm aware.
Yeah. I said this at the last time when the first one was brought to us before council. I have a friend, a very close friend, who has a similar business and was also looking to expand her home child daycare facility, and I know that there are a lot of regulations that the state makes you go through. So, I'm confident that, you know, if you've gotten to this point where you're presenting before the council and the state has given you the go-ahead, that there are enough things that you had to qualify for in order for it to get to a legal point, so I'll be supporting this.
Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry. Good. Ray Taylor, Republican, mayor.
Thank you. My question is, what is the, does the ordinance provide for any density, safe residence? Could six houses in a block all be zoned for childcare?
They wouldn't be zoned if you give a special use for that, which we control.
That's not my question.
Yeah, through the chair. There are some additional special use requirements to give the council the discretion that if they feel that the amount of these facilities, these judgments of the neighborhood, they could decline additional childcare centers.
The other question, I saw the property in it, is that, five of them have some like that. My question is, the limitation, who monitors the hover students in these homes? Is it the state?
No, it's state department. And we're like now when they have family childcare, it's a maximum of six kids there at a time.
So, I think you have five now, or do you have a whole six?
I have six.
You have six. And according to your license, you can't take in more than six. Okay, thank you.
Mr.?
Oh, one other question. Do you have to own the home to run your daycare and the home when you requesting a license?
Through the chair, we've heard a provision in that only the care provider and his or her immediate family shall reside in the home, to prohibit somebody from opening it as a business. So, that's one of our requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, Mayor. Mr. Fraser?
Okay, but it didn't answer, I'll be really answer the mayor's question because she asked, because you have to own them, you can still rent and live there and have a daycare center, I think. I mean, I don't know any reason.
Yeah, I'm living in this house.
Okay.
I'm living in this house, and at the same time, I have daycare.
Yeah, it's, now, whether you're living there, it's whether you own or rent, is the question. I think that's the question the mayor asked. Is there a provision that the person has to own the house, or could they open a daycare center in a rented house even if they're living there?
It says that the care provider has to reside in the home. It does not say if they own or rent.
Okay.
But this is to prevent someone operating a business where nobody's living there.
Sure, and accidents.
It's similar to any single family can be rented or owned.
Okay. Those were my questions. I was just trying to clarify what the mayor asked and the answer that she got.
Okay.
And I'm not familiar with the state requirements, but does the state require smoke alarms?
Yeah, and each sleeping room, one gets sleeping.
Okay. Secondly, does the state require background checks of your employees?
Through the chair, if I could, you're currently operating up to six on your own. The state does require, once you go to seven to 12, you have to have another employee. And that employee has to be screened through through the state licensing?
No. He's supposed to have to see the answer, state, you may just. He's supposed to pass through the answer, state, you may test, make up exams, and...
That's a skills test, but, you know, I read once in a while we turn on the news and find out that something bad has happened to young children, or we find out years down the road that something has happened because an adult is, some bad things.
I understand, but you're supposed to pass orientation in the city. They're supposed to listen all, all what, what we're doing. But this person, then you have to come here in the city for...
Well, let me ask it more clearly, because I don't think I've communicated properly. Could you hire a criminal to be a, pardon?
Of course.
Is there a rule that you can't?
We have to.
No, this person's supposed to get fingerprints.
Oh, okay, all right. That's the question, that's why I re-asked the question, so that you would understand the question that I'm asking. Okay, there's one other question that came up in the planning commission meeting that I didn't see in the notes, and the question was asked by one of the commissioners about how many children per caretaker. And the question was, I think it's six, or one per six, but there were supposed to be checked, there's supposed to be a check to find out was it one per six or was it some other number? And I didn't see any note that said that that answer came back.
Well, again, the provider stated that once she goes over six, she has to have a second care provider, whether it's seven or up to twelve. So, the next six requires an additional care, caretaker.
Okay, so just mathematically, it would be one per six?
Well, I don't, I don't have those specifics.
I can interject here, I know a little something about this. The, it depends on the age of the children, the age requirement. So, for instance, if she was doing infants, she would have to have a child.
Okay.
It's a gradual thing, as the children get older, fewer adults.
That is correct.
Okay, all right, that answers my question.
I just wanted to, so this goes back to my question. If she's nearby herself, is all six kids, how many children can she physically, if she hires four more people, does that mean she can hire, for every additional person she can hire, six more? What is the matter?
Six, twelve.
For this project?
Through the chair, group childcare home licenses up to twelve, and that's as high as our density per children per household is permitted.
All right, any other questions? By council? Yeah, Ms. Porcafi?
Yes, on the question that whether the house is rented or owned by the user. If it's rented, don't they have to register it as a rental property, irrespective of the use?
I believe that's a city requirement, irrespective of the fact that the home is owned.
But if it's rented, can you own the home?
Any other questions by council? Hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the approval of GP 1248 to order.
Been moved by Mr. Monk, seconded by Mr. Frasier. All of them favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Good luck to you. All right. Mr. Crowe will move on to GP 1250 and SP 1295, this is a special use, and site plan request of Patrick Bennett, of Corstates Group on behalf of the owner, Telegraph Investment Group to abolish. Thank you, for the assisting Denny's Restaurant and construction of Panera Bread on Telegraph Road at 28681 and the Flourishers.
Thank you. Since you've read the basic premises to the record, I'm going to start the video here and then we have to answer any questions after the applicant.
We have the owner, Telegraph Investment Group, for a new Panera Bread restaurant on property located at 28681 Telegraph Road, on the west side of Telegraph between I-696 and 12 Mile Road, part of blocks 21 to 23 of Supervisor's Plant Number Six, bidwell Park at 2417, 201060 in Section 17 of the city. Subject property as well as the properties to the northwest and south for Zone B3 general business. The property to the east across Telegraph Road is known RS Regional Shopping. With regard to the existing land uses, the subject property is developed at the Denny's Restaurant. The property to the north is developed at the Bell Tire Store. The property to the west is developed at the LA Fitness Center. The property to the south is developed with a parking lot for LA Fitness. The property to the east across Telegraph Road is developed with commercial uses within the Tel 12 Shopping Center. The proposed site contains 1.03 acres of land with 235.2 feet of frontage along Telegraph Road and a depth of 190 feet. The special use request is to permit free dining restaurant within the B3 general business district. The submitted site plan reflects the demolition of the existing Denny's Restaurant and the construction of a new 4,600 gross square foot Panera Bread restaurant with drive-throughs. The parking required for the development is thirty-six spaces with forty-four provided outsite. The landscape provided conforms to ordinance requirements. The elevations reflect a mix of bricks, pieces, and glass. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the special use and site plan work, the standards and conditions of the special use requirements of the B3 general business district for free dining restaurants. The petitioner is to implement recommendations made by the Southdale planning department and Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security. The proposal is in accordance with the Southdale Comprehensive Master Plan noting regional mixed use for this parcel.
Through the chair, the planning department received a special use and site plan request on November 30th, 2012. The planning commission held a public hearing on this matter on January 30th, 2013 and made a favorable recommendation. This also was forwarded to the council site plan committee, which received a favorable recommendation for it for public hearing. We have representatives of the architect, the owner, and Panera Bread here tonight. If you want to make a few comments before we open to the public hearing.
Could you name again, please state your name and address, the business address of the record?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of council. My name is Patrick Bennett and with Corstates Group, with offices at 50 Crestwood Executive Center in St. Louis, Missouri. As Mr. Crowe alluded, we've been working diligently over the past three months with planning staff and the rest of the city to get to this point this evening. We have a project that we believe will be very beneficial to the area and will act relatively similar to what is going on there today with the most significant exception being the addition of the driver services for the patrons. The overall site flow through the center will remain the same. The building location will be approximately the same location as the current Denny's Restaurant, however, our footprint is smaller than what is currently on site. Overall, the parking lot layout will not change and will not be redesigned in any way, shape, or form. With that, I have to answer any questions.
Okay. At this time, then, I'm going to ask you to have a seat in the front row, and I will declare a public hearing open on GP 1250 and SP 1295. Anyone wishing to address the council should come forward.
Mr. President, my name is Gerard Mullin. My address is gerardmullin2012@gmail.com. Sad to say, this legal notice for this public hearing contains within it a spelling error. Yes, a spelling error. Check it out, check this phrase out, quote, 4,600 gross square feet, unquote, feet is erroneously misspelled with two o's instead of two e's. Remember the lesson we all learned in Teddy Garden. You have one left foot, you have one right foot, and together you have two feet. In other words, at an early age, one learns that feet is the plural for foot. I have in hand the June 14th, 2012 edition of the Southfield Sun, the one newspaper that every Southfield resident gets a copy of, and where the city of Laker Village, that drew on Southfield Road, publishes its legal notices. On page 13A, you will find a Laker Village legal notice in which they spell out the word foot correctly, six out of six times, and not the literal use of the word foot. I subverse some eyes on this, that this is the real reason why this council doesn't publish their legal notices in the Southfield Sun, the one newspaper that every Southfield resident gets a copy of. This council, because this council doesn't want to reveal to the voters the fact that this council can't spell. In fairness, I should point out that this council has taken a giant step in improving their spelling skills in the last year. For example, on January 23rd, 2012, during my TV debut before this council, I pointed out eight misspelled words on council's legal notices. Today, council has gotten it down to one misspelled word per meeting, but one misspelled word is one misspelled word to any. At this time, I would like to propose to this council a final solution to council's embarrassing problem of that structure. This is my proposal. Council has a legislative committee, council has a finance committee, and council has a site plan committee. What council really needs is a spelling committee.
I don't know what we do with that, Mr. President. Keep us on the straight and narrow. Ms. Gerald?
Pamela Gerald, P.O. Box 155, South Dale, Michigan 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-352-9188. And voters, you know I am only a phone call away. I don't have a problem with this project because it's automated or fair and, you know, there's already a Denny's there. But what I'm concerned about is, is there adequate parking with the LA Fitness there? Because LA Fitness is crowded quite a bit. I'm also concerned about whether or not there was a parking waiver given and how many spaces are required for this particular restaurant. And then I'm really concerned from a public safety standpoint because traffic that is heading northbound on Telegraph has a tendency to make the loop there in front of LA Fitness and Honda, and they cross over 12 mile to get into LA Fitness. I found out from one of our patrol officers, that is illegal. That is not a proper turn. You're supposed to go up across 12 mile road in front of our famous Louisiana Kitchen Popeye's Restaurant and make that loop turn and come back and turn right. So, are we going to put up proper signage to remind the people that that's an illegal maneuver? It's there, but they're not addressing it, so do we need to put up a bigger sign? Do we need to put up something red? Do we need to put up a "don't do" in bold yellow letters? I don't know, but they're still doing it. So, I'm really concerned about that particular part of this public hearing and to the people I am...
Anyone else wishing to address the council proceedings at this podium? Good evening, Ms. Mullin.
Good evening to you all, Madam Mayor, City Internment Planner, by the way, council clerk, of course, Jim. First of all, I'm amazed that the misspelling of the word didn't matter to me, right? I think the council, you are human, which I think you all are, say aye, you're going to make mistakes because we're human beings, correct? So, whether it's feet or whether it's foot, we're here because someone wants, again, and I'm sorry by the way to mistake my name and my address, St. area of Longwood, 1736 Bay Gateway Circle, Southfield. Whether, again, it's a foot or a feet, we have someone here that's asking to rezone and go from Denny's to a Panera Bread. If anyone knows, I know, they know me to know, I'm about growing the city. And so, if that means us looking into someone that wants to come in and revitalize, rejuvenate, and restore a site that would still bring vibrance to our city, I am all for that. As far as what's illegal, I'm sure that would be addressed. I'm sure the business owner, as probably did, is too diligent, and if he had it, I'm sure that, I'm very confident that he would do that. I would just like to have a question addressed to him as far as the drive-through and the hours of the drive-through. This is a Panera Bread that obviously presents itself to be very different from the other two that we have in the city. So, I would just like to know the drive-through hours and how that would defer, we know it will defer from the other ones, but what would be the idea and the purpose for the drive-through hours for that location? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mullin. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council on this public hearing? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Mr. Crowe, anything to add?
I want to clarify that there are more than enough parking spaces for the requirements. There is a waiver that's required from the ZDA for two standing spaces that the applicant, and that's part of our recommended resolution for city council, that that waiver be obtained. I'll defer to the applicant to answer the drive-through hours and other questions that the council may have.
Sir?
Thank you. Drive-through hours would be the same, cafe hours, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. For anyone that is concerned, the drive-through speakers do have volume control. We are not adjacent to residential properties, but regardless of that, there are standards in place to present a model project for everyone around the business, visually and visually feasible.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Porcafi? Sir, is there any other questions? Yes, there is. Mr. Monk?
Yeah, a few things. Number one, there's a recent improvement, I think, to the Laker Village Panera Bread. There was a remodel done inside. It was a big floor with a bunch of tables which were always strewn about, and the current remodeling is now more roof oriented, which I think looks really nicely. Is that kind of the model that's going to be brought to this?
I don't believe that it misses exactly what's there.
It was a different upgrade.
Hi, Carol Scobie, Panera Bread, 3630 South Dale Road, St. Louis, Missouri, 63127. It's obviously site-specific.
Okay.
And it also depends on volume and the type of customers that we, we try to integrate as much pizza as we can, and we also try to have flexible seating as possible.
I'm satisfied, I'm satisfied with this whole proposal. I do have to mention something because I get, maybe I'm in a mood tonight, I don't know. I'm particularly frustrated when a perceived spelling error is used against us to define our own incompetence, which I think is ridiculous, that, you know, somehow we're wrong as a city, we're incompetent as a city, when there's a perceived spelling error on a document. That's number one. Number two, Mr. Mullin, your explanation to us on foot versus feet in and of itself is not correct. And I'm going to entertain what you said, and I'll throw it right back at you. I pulled up something called the grammar logs. What is the correct manner in using measurements such as feet or foot, more specifically in speaking of square feet or square foot? The answer, when the measurement is being... The answer: When the measurement is being used as a pre-noun modifier, we use the singular foot. For example, the museum has added a fifty thousand square foot extension. When the measurement is not a modifier, we use the plural feet. The museum has added another fifty thousand square feet. There's a modifier here that notices correct. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have one. Yes.
Yes, it's the same thing that I brought up at the site plan committee, and that is, and I know Panera Bread's not gonna be responsible for it. The city of Southfield, I don't believe it's gonna be responsible for it. But somebody needs to bring to the attention of the power people that there's a fire hydrant right in the middle of the sidewalk in front of Denny's, which will be a Panera Bread, and it needs, it's a safety hazard as far as I'm concerned, it needs to be fixed.
The chair, I thought that was caught.
No, it's, and, you know, I go to Denny's once in a while. Sorry to see it go.
Well, we'll get some attention to that.
I had to bring this, I think they put it in when they did Telegraph Road. Right, I just read the middle of the sidewalk.
I have a question.
Madam Mayor, does I have a question?
Um, this might be to the plan. When I look at the site plan and the Denny's is being placed, I mean, we tear down the Denny's and place a Panera, why didn't we move the building closer to the sidewalk? I thought that was part of our master plan to start. You know, you talk about walkable communities, you're gonna have sidewalks, and then you're gonna have these current park there. I would think that it would, it would need our master plan. If I look at the plan, that's the same design. Can you explain that?
Yeah, through the chairs of the mayor, and then I'll let the applicant respond specifically why it's on the same footprint. But based on our non-motorized master plan, we have incorporated a sidewalk connection from the main public sidewalk through the site to the front entrance. They have also included bike racks, and we have a provision for outdoor seating. So we are in compliance of our master plan. We don't have any provisions in the Telegraph Road quarter to have the building up against the road. And there are specific reasons why the applicant chose to build over the same foundation, and I believe most of those are financial reasons.
Thank you. I agree, two points to make, as Mr. Perkoff referenced. The intent was to limit the disturbance of the existing site. Don't need to create additional financial expense when we have a parking lot that is already intact and usable. And to address your point, if we work with a closer building, then we have a chicken and egg scenario where we're gonna lose parking and then be short for what we would need to comply with codes and someone can flip the overall site floor. So that the ideal place was to leave it right where it was at.
I have a little disappointed with that because as we get new developments, we get opportunity to create the, closer to the sidewalk. I understand it would, but I don't think we're gonna lose parking because you have the same footprint. But I did see on the site plan that you connected the sidewalk to the front door. But that's part of, when you look at development in our plan and our council have talked about this, is that when you move the properties closer to the main Denny's there and to new developments do that, I mean, it is what it is. We can't make you do it if it's right, but I would hope that we would change it. And this has nothing to do with this, but can we configure the plan of this meeting so I, he doesn't, that was back to me when he was talking. He had offered a plan that we could turn it. He's speaking into the mic and if there's a way that he can configure it or turn it something, like he can speak to me because I'm listening at the back.
Well, shake that under.
I have a question for you, Mr. Van Hooch. I'm, as I mentioned in the council's site plan meeting, excited to see this restaurant come and refreshing our site in Darryl Mile. If this is approved tonight, which I believe will be, when would the restaurant have closed? And when do you think it'll have the new Panera open?
I will answer part of that question, and I'll refer it to the board later. After that, just for your application, we have some availability permit review approval already. With the understanding that we need this approval as well as the zoning board approval prior to fully needing permits, but the intent at this point is to break ground by April first with opening by September?
August twenty-seventh.
August twenty-seventh, okay. You were doing the address of Denny's. I think you're right.
Can you add your address on the record? Good evening, my name's Peter Zingus. I'm the owner developer of the property. I'm the landlord for Panera. I'm currently the landlord for the Denny's restaurant as well. Really, it's day by day we're prepared to when the Denny's will be closing. Soon we'll get all our permits and give the proper notices to the DQ prior to demolition, and also with the city. We're just, we're ready to go. So we're looking hopefully at the end of March to have the pad ready for preparing to start the construction of the building itself.
All right. And the councilman Fraser is looking, you know, for that one last meal. Wants to know that one night and say that it's open, so he can just have his last, whatever. A theater spot or whatever.
That's probably the asking question.
I have one more quick.
Oh, Mayor.
Is this gonna be outside dining? And that would be on which side, on the Telegraph side or on the?
Belt side or the board side?
On the left side. So you're, I'm looking at your landscaping for this. We're not gonna move any of the landscaping. Would the improvement to the landscaping, if you could just talk to me about Telegraph Road?
We have, along Telegraph Road, we have a new embellished landscape system, if you will, which shrugs an additional tree, I believe, I think there's two existing. One additional tree, as well as hedgerow and a monumental fence slash decorative. Comment, if you will.
Through the chair to the mayor. We've required a request of a thirty-inch hedge among the front Telegraph property to help screen the parking lots. And as Mr. Van Hooch indicated, there also is a decorative fence separating the outdoor seating area from the drive-through.
Okay, thank you. I'm excited about you being here. I know you're a national tank, but I think councilman Fraser would be happy if you just added a Denny's breakfast special.
All right, any other questions to the council? That's done, I'll adjutant motion.
I'll move the approval of GP twelve fifty, SP twelve ninety-five.
Just to show you how good I am, I'll support.
Wow.
Who's by Mr. Moss, who's by Mr. Fraser. Although in favor, signify my thing, I.
I.
Oppose none, motion carries. Good luck with your new venture.
Well, thank you for your time. We look forward to bringing this creation to Panera.
They have supported it with tears in my eyes.
Okay, we are moving on to a rezoning request. And Mr. Crowe, this is ZR thirteen sixteen, and it deals with Calabat property at Eight Mile and North Land Drive.
Through the chair. ZR thirteen sixteen has a rezoning request of Lake Barish Armada Real Estate on behalf of the owner, Jamal Calabat, to rezone four point three four acres of RMM Multiple Family Medium Rise to ERO Education Research Office and rezone three point eight one acres of RMM Multiple Family Medium Rise to B three general business property located at sixteen nine hundred through seventeen two hundred West Eight Mile Road on the north side of West Eight Mile Road between Northland Drive and Rutland. Have a very video presentation.
Lake Barish, to rezone four point three four acres of RMM zoned land to ERO Education Research Office and to rezone three point eight one acres of RMM land to B three general business. The properties are located at sixteen nine hundred to seventeen two hundred West Eight Mile Road on the north side of Eight Mile Road between Northland Drive and Rutland, lot fifteen to seventeen, and part of lot fourteen of Northland Park Number Two subdivision, single parcel two four three six, three seven seven, zero one six through zero one eight, zero two two and zero two seven, in section thirty-six of the city. The subject property is owned B three general business in RMM Multiple Family Medium Rise. The property to the north is owned R two, single family residential and ERO Education Research Office. The property to the west is built ERO Education Research Office. The property to the south across Eight Mile Road is zoned for commercial uses within the city of Detroit. And the property to the east is zoned B three general business. With regard to existing land use, the property is vacant. The property to the north is developed with single family homes on West Houston and West Dover and the Craftar's Office Building. The property to the west is developed with an office building undergoing renovation, a vacant parcel across Rutland Drive and numerous offices further to the west. The property to the south across Eight Mile Road and in the city of Detroit is developed with a variety of commercial and office uses. The property to the east is built with a universal wholesale building. The total site contains nine point eight four acres of land with four point three four acres of RMM property proposed to be rezoned to ERO Education Research Office and three point eight one acres of RMM land proposed to be rezoned to B three general business. There is one thousand two hundred and ninety-two point zero four feet of frontage along Eight Mile Road and Northland Drive, which is four hundred eighty-seven point eight eight feet. Issues considered by the planning department during review of the rezoning order, the proposed rezoning has a relation to the surrounding zone classification and its relation to the Southfield comprehensive master plan that indicates Cornerstone Development Authority subarea for the rental. The proposed rezoning to ERO Education Research Office and B three general business to allow the petitioner to market the properties for redevelopment with new land uses compatible with the abiding existing development. The proposed rezoning will not have adverse effects on any of the adjoining zoning or land uses.
Through the chair, the planning commission held a public hearing made a favorable recommendation on January thirty, two thousand thirteen. Also, tonight, we received, just prior to the meeting, a letter dated February twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen, Mr. Alice Savis, Executive Director, Southfield TDA, which I handed out. And in short, he says that the Southfield Downtown Development Authority supports the rezoning. I would ask the applicant to make a few comments.
Good evening, your name and address for the record.
Lake Barish, six five six four, Old Blue Way, Southfield. Here represent the property owner of this property, currently zoned RMM with a small piece of B three. The past eight years or so, this current owner is owning the property. Original plans were to develop residential, but over the years and in the condition of the residential market, we had to alter our plans. I personally have been working on this property as a commercial real estate agent for the past five years or so, struggling to find the right owner, user, developer, amongst a number of challenges, and one of them was the rezoning, or the current zoning, and for whatever proposed. The purpose of this rezoning is to help catapult any future developer with any plans. And the split zoning that we are proposing, after meetings with the planning department, works perfectly with the abiding properties. The ERO buffers the residential, the B three helps with frontage and commercial properties developed along Eight Mile Road. As you quote mentioned, the CDA is in approval of this rezoning request.
Now, I would note before we open the public hearing that this property, most of us on council, we call, rezoned this property before, the B three corner, as well as multiple residential. I'm trying to think if it's from the ERO zoning earlier. So we can feel your pain. We improved the condos and the market class, so we certainly understand that. All right, so at this point, I want you to have a seat in the front row, and then I will declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to address the council on this rezoning should come before the podium at the time.
Pamela Gero, P.O. Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number is two four eight three five two nine one eight eight. And voters, you know I'm a call away. I was just speaking briefly to Mr. Barish in reference to the split zoning. I applaud him, as you said, council president, for having that particular Eight Mile area and attempting to revitalize and do something with it. I'm amazed. You okay, Mr. Fraser? Okay. I'm concerned about the fact that we spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or a little bit more for a master plan. And once it was completed, it sat on the shelf for about five years. Now, this is kind of off the subject a little bit, but we talked about rezoning twelve miles of Southfield Road for Walmart for a B three that the residents just did not want. Why hasn't the master plan included revitalization for Northland? And that particular area? I don't hear any reference to the master plan talking about that area. I wouldn't have a problem with this particular rezoning because the B three would give Walmart an opportunity if they wanted to go near Eight Mile and Northland to open up a smaller, more compact store. That would be great revitalization over at the Northland area, which was one of the proposed sites that the residents thought would be better suited for Walmart. But I'm just concerned about not knowing what project is going to go there right now during the split rezoning. So what I would like to respectfully request of this council before you approve the rezoning, because you hardly ever deny a rezoning request. And it's not, like Walmart, you don't have five hundred people here, that you put a clause on there to say that it would be contingent on the right development being in that area. It would be contingent on businesses that would be suited for the B three versus the ERO if you were to do something like that. Seeing that there's no plan for you in terms of what they plan to put there, I would be more supportive of this, but I'm not against it. I'm not against it. Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to address the council on this? Good evening, Mr. Moss.
Good evening, Gero, and I'm here in Southfield. I noted the tolerance. You didn't challenge someone else, I mean, you have my address in the record. You treat me, you know, I need to treat me differently than other people that share the microphone. You have the address in the record.
Contend to Mr. Moss.
Thank you very much. I noted the tolerance with which you regarded Mr. Mullen's comments, tolerance which you have not shown me since I've been here. But I would like to say that, and I remember Mr. Sharet's rebuttal of my, it took quite a few minutes to rebut my comment, that the agendas of these meetings are dictated from above because this municipal corporation is actually a subsidiary of the federal government, as contrary to the principles of the republic. But it's not that the dictators step by step before we get here, the parameters under which this body the parameters under which this body is permitted, I'm being permitted, as subjects of the federal government to work. You must abide by those if you want to stay in business and maintain your positions. But based on the previews of the forecast of what it may happen in this nation economically, we are squandering that ample time and resources still within possession to put up some kind of safety net for ourselves wherever we may be. This place, Southfield, I have come to understand, used to be a farming community, is no longer. The upgrading everything to further further commercialization is setting us up for disaster, because if there is, and it looks like there will be in the short sight of 10 years, an economic collapse in this nation by design, we will not be prepared. We will be doing business as usual, just as they were doing on the Titanic before hit the iceberg, and they could have looked out, and even people at the helm should have known.
I'd ask you to get on the subject of this rezoning.
So Mr. Mullin's comments weren't on the subject of that, is okay. But when I talk about something else-
Directing the wording of the notice related directly to the plan before.
Well, I think he made one reference that-
I'm picking away. You want to argue with me?
He used that Southfield newspaper perhaps to inform people of upcoming public hearings, maybe legal notices. If it's true that everyone in Southfield gets a copy of it, not everyone reads it probably, but it would be handy if things that this council was preparing to do would be printed in that newsletter. We are under a private commercial jurisdiction, Mrs. Cyber, and it is your business, even though you tried to shut me up from saying so. I noted that you left me two messages on an answering machine at my house where I'm staying, and you asked me to call you before this meeting. I did not call you because you publicly insulted me last time in mentioning that I had phoned you before. I will never phone you again unless I get a public apology at this meeting for your insults. I don't expect to get that from you. So don't expect any phone calls from me. You requested me to phone you, probably to insult me.
You're off topic.
Oh, yes. That's fine. Somebody else is off the topic, but I hit off topic on something I can't speak about anywhere else.
I have never agreed to apologize to anyone if I've insulted you.
Tell me this about it.
What I was trying to do last time, and I'm trying to do right now, is get you to talk to the matter at hand.
This is the matter at hand, but you want to-
And we do not agree on that. We do not agree on that.
You could just let me talk, like you did with Mr. Mullin, but somehow what I'm saying is some kind of challenge to you in some way?
It's not a challenge.
I'm trying to inform you of what I've learned during the last 15 years.
You told us over and over again.
I have told you, you have never listened. You never learned from anything I've said, apparently. I've told you over and over again. In the restraint of the minutes you're here, I cannot possibly expand on what I'm trying to relate to you. I'm only mentioning things in passing. You're not interested in entertaining questions. I noted that Mr. Moss had the time to comment on Mr. Mullin's comments about spelling, but you will need to make a comment, an intelligent comment, on what I'm trying to bring to your attention. We are being set up by people in control of this, our lives, and we're doing nothing about it to prepare for disaster, which is going along, as like I mentioned with the analogy about the Titanic, partying on deck, doing business as usual, and the iceberg is at full view, and we're just ignoring it. Any questions?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this rezoning? If not, I will declare the public hearing closed. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The move to ER 1316, support?
It's been moved by Mr. Fercotti. Mr. Moss, is there any debate or question before we? I would add one thing before we take the vote, and that is that there's been a lot of concern over the years from Northland Gardens neighborhood regarding this particular property. They've registered, they've given lots of feedback to Mr. Calabat and his representative, and my understanding is that they approved the rezoning, that they're supportive of the rezoning.
Based on the meetings during the planning group sessions, we did get positive feedback from residents.
And I've heard the same. All right, thank you very much. I'll call for the vote. Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, and it has to do with just what you're talking about. I looked at the minutes of the Planning Commission for the 30th, and it gives a reference to the fact that the planning, or that the public hearing was advertised, but I don't see anything in the minutes that indicate that there actually was an opening of a public hearing. And it doesn't, it looks like it was advertised, but it doesn't look like it was acted on at the Planning Commission meeting, according to the minutes. So.
Yeah, I'm sure the public hearing was held, that there was a recommendation ordered by the Planning Commission.
I don't see that in the-
I-
It was, it's absent from the-
Okay, I understand that.
These are supposed to be records that, you know, 10 years from now, somebody will dig up the things, and maybe somebody in the audience will dig up this.
I believe, if I could address you, the Planning Commission public hearing was held on the 30th-
Yes.
-of January. The regular meeting is scheduled for this Wednesday, where they will adopt and approve the meeting minutes. So we have forward you a draft of the minutes. They are going to act on those minutes this Wednesday. So that's why it might be written the way it is, because it hasn't been acted on yet.
Okay, could you make sure that-
I will, and it's just, I think it's just a tiny-
Just for the record.
I completely agree, but that's the explanation I have for you.
Correct. Thanks.
Okay, with that, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? You have your rezoning. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to mention, they needed the zoning tonight because it was advertised and it needed an action with that piece of property. But I was telling the planner before the meeting that, when I look at this, this would be a perfect place to have this overlay development district, because it gives a flexibility to those two zones. And that's when we look at that district, and this is the type of property that will be used, I hope, in the manner in which we try to change the zoning cases so that people get not worried about property lines as much as getting an overlay of landscaping and more original kinds of developments in the city.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I believe we need to introduce an ordinance.
Yes, sir.
It might be 1601.
1601.
64 miles.
All right.
I move that we introduce ordinance number 1602, board.
It's been moved by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Moss, for the introduction of ordinance 1602 to comply with ER 1316. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next, we have a public hearing on GP 1246, which is an amendment to the Article 2 definitions of our zoning ordinance. I'll let Mr. Crowe hopefully explain it, but I will say that this is in relation to the overlay district, something that this council has discussed on numerous occasions, beginning with last summer, and as most recently is two weeks ago. Mr. Crowe, the board chair.
Thank you. Through the chair, GP 1246 is to amend Article 2 definitions of the zoning ordinance by deleting Sections 5.3, 5.8, and 5.9, and adding new Sections 5.3, 5.8, 5.9, and to amend Article 4 general provisions by adding Sections 5.2, 2-3, Overlay Development District, Chapter 45 zoning, Title 5 zoning and planning of the city of Southfield. The purpose is, the city is desirous of providing an overlay development district to encourage development of those parcels of land, which because of their size, their location being uniquely situated with regard to high density adjoining uses, or their unique environmental features, a more flexible development scheme could foster creative development and design, or preserve desirable natural features, significant historic landmarks, and architectural features located within the overlay development district. Also, the overlay development district modifies the traditional form of zoning and permits variety in design, site configuration, setbacks, layouts, use, and encourages efficiency in use of land and natural resources while ensuring compatibility of surrounding land uses. In return for greater flexibility in site design requirements, the overlay development districts are expected to deliver exceptional quality community designs that provide above-average pedestrian amenities, incorporate creative design in the layout of buildings, focus on pedestrian space and circulation, incorporate public art, assure compatibility with surrounding land uses, and neighborhood care to provide greater efficiency in the layout and provision of room, utilities, and other infrastructure. We have proposed three districts as an initial start. The Southfield Technology Quarter, which basically is Telegraph Road from 8 Mile up to 696, the City Center District, and the Downtown Development Authority District. I have received a letter today dated February 25th, 2013, regarding the overlay development district from Mr. Alice Sevis, Executive Director of Southfield DDA. In summary, the Southfield Development District supports the recommendations offered by the Planning Commission and the city planner, and proposes to work with all involved to create another effective development role. The ordinance would be a vital tool for stimulating redevelopment in the Southfield Development District. It would provide developers consistent understanding of the requirements of future development, something highly valued by the business community. We believe that this is just a modern tool in the development toolbox. The flexibility that it offers will encourage innovative design, and we're in favor of it per our resolution.
All right. At this point, I will declare the public hearing open on the amendment to our zoning ordinance to permit the overlay district. Anyone wishing to address the council on this amendment should come to the podium. Mr. Mullin, the board chair.
Mr. President, my name is Gerard Mullin. My address is GerardMullin2012@gmail.com. I have an observation that I'd like to share with this council at this time regarding the verbiage of this legal notice for this public hearing, and similar verbiage for other similar legal notices for public hearings published over the last few years. My concern is with the part that states, quote, "by deleting Sections 5.3, 5.8, and 5.9, and adding new Sections 5.3, 5.8, and 5.9," unquote. Historically, council would have used the following verbiage, quote, "by deleting Sections 5.3, 5.8, and 5.9, and inserting and move thereof new Sections 5.3, 5.8, and 5.9," unquote. In other words, the word "adding" as we replace the phrase "inserting and move thereof." To mere resident like myself, this appears to be a distinction without a difference, but my DNA tells me otherwise. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. Mullin? Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on the rezoning, rather, the amendments to the zoning ordinance? Now, at this time, I declare the public hearing closed, council.
Yeah, I'll just make it quickly as needed. This is great. This is an opportunity for us to really redevelop as a city and head in a direction where we need to go. And we talked about this a little bit, or I talked about this a little bit at our last major meeting, major public hearing, about how this is really a desirable zoning trend for the city. And I'm excited to see what projects come our way. I think this is going to help us really become a Renaissance city, and I'm going to be all supportive of this.
Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, I think that the traditional kinds of development and zoning that we've had have sort of locked us in, and we keep hearing the census plays, we keep hearing different things about how the business world is changing to make a city more viable, and I think this will give us an opportunity. Even though these are three areas that are more or less test areas to find out if it works, they're critical areas that need some, need some new ideas to brighten them up, and so I also support this and think it's a good idea, and glad you brought it to us.
Mr. President?
Mr. Max?
I believe at this moment, the council is things down the utopia or paradise. You lost your greatest opportunity to development in this city by voting against Walmart, and now you're patting yourselves on the back in development and talking about this, and a bunch of a lummy. You lost the incentive to big business to come in here. They're not coming to Southfield because of what you've done to big business. And you talk, wait, the young member of our council, speaking now to the council. Wait, wait, it's all a cover-up. Last.
I don't know. I have no response.
Last, Mr. Moss. But if, if you carry out all your rezoning for anybody else, and you didn't do it for Walmart, or you're going to get it in the future, or you're not going to get it. Because we have lost now some very big companies that want you to come into Southfield, and they're not coming in because of your attitude and what you've done. That's enough. I didn't tell you more. Next time, I'll keep you informed of better information I have. Smile, Mr. Max.
Is there anyone else on council which is mayor?
I just wanted to make the comment, we decided that we would use these three areas as a beginning, and I hope that we continue to look at ways to open up development and to be friendlier, find a way to be, as we say, development-ready. I think that these three areas we identified gave us some tools, but as we know, 12 Mile and Southfield Road was not included in these districts. So as we find two of these districts and learn how to use overlay, I would hope that we would continue to expand this throughout the city. Thank you.
I would make two comments. A lot of our, or most of our current zoning was designed around car culture, with the auto racing automobile first. Thus, we have lots of large parking lots and setbacks and wide thoroughfares. And this particular zoning will help us create more industrial-friendly areas as well as more mixed use rather than isolated uses. To the planner, I would also add that thank you for your patience with us. You worked steadily at educating us about this, as well as incorporating our suggestions and our, I'll say, reservations. So we appreciate the work that you've put into this alone with the Planning Commission. Is there any other comment before?
Yes, just on principle, I'm voting no.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
Okay. We have motion carries- We have motion carried, we have--
We need a motion.
Oh, we didn't have a motion, I'm sorry, we didn't have a motion.
Well, doesn't that--
Well, although--
I move that we--
You'll get another opportunity.
I move that we approve GB 246, support.
All right, the move by Mr. Fraser and supported by Mr. Moss. Now, all those in favor, please, if I may say a aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Let the record show, the motion carries, four to one. Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Hi, Mr. Fraser, first, your name?
I need, I think we need an ordinance introduced.
Right.
Mr. President, I move that we introduce ordinance number 1603, support.
The move by Mr. Fraser and supported by Mr. Moss to introduce our ordinance 1603 related to the amendments to the zoning ordinance overlay district. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, yes, Mr. Moss.
I would like to request that the council consider moving the request for the gaming license for the group that's here. It's at the end of the meeting.
Sure, we can do that.
Thank you.
No objections, I'd be happy to move that up on the agenda under your patience. So I guess I'm going to turn to the clerk, and perhaps the clerk is getting her materials in front of her. Would you come forward, please, this is the request for a gaming license from the Torch of Wisdom Foundation.
If you want to listen to what he--
And I own it.
Pleasure to have you, Scotty. Thanks.
Request before you is from the Torch of Wisdom Foundation Incorporated. They are a non-profit organization located at 218-199 Mile Road. They are requesting council's approval of a gaming license for the purpose of conducting a raffle in partnership with the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. The organization will be hosting a fundraising event on May 18, 2013, at the Torch of Wisdom Foundation Plaza, which is located at 218-199 Mile Road, from 6 to 9 p.m. The proceeds from the event will be used for youth programs, academic scholarships, and changes to the Torch of Wisdom Foundation facility to allow for more handicap accessibility. All the required documentation has been presented to the press office, and we are requesting that we provide the doctor's resolution approving this foundation as a non-profit organization for the purpose of obtaining the gaming license.
And I'd like to have you say a few words, give your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Paulette Boggs, and I'm the president of the Torch of Wisdom Foundation, and with me are several members of our board, our treasurer, Felicia Hunter, and one of our board members, Beverly Allen. We represent, again, the Torch of Wisdom Foundation, whose offices are located at 218-19 West 9 Mile Road. The foundation celebrates 20 years of existence this year. The foundation was created out of the efforts of those within the sorority Delta Sigma Theta Southeast alumni chapter, who had a wise vision, broadened our scope such that we would be able to raise more funds, more dollars, for academic scholarship initiatives, cultural arts, and community enrichment initiatives. We'd like to move forward in increasing this opportunity to have a fundraiser such that we would be able to raise more dollars for scholarships, our youth programs, as well as handicap accessibility to our building. On a weekly basis, we have about 100 young ladies that come into the building, and it is just a wonderful sight to see, the number of young ladies that come into the building and the activities that we are doing, the challenge that we are faced with, of course, there are those that are unable to come into the building because of perhaps disabilities that they may have, so this will be an opportunity to raise funds, to bring in an elevator and things of that nature. Additionally, the scholarships that we provide, we'd like to increase and even double the number of scholarships such that we will be able to provide more educational foundation for our youth in the future. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The city court has mentioned that all the documents are in order, and I'd like to move the request for the gaming license for the foundation.
Lawrence?
The move by Mr. Fracchi, supported by Mr. Fraser, is there any other discussion? Could I?
Yeah. What kind of games are you looking for, for fundraising? What is your fundraising system?
I guess the fundraiser is actually a raffle. So it's a raffle, we would be selling raffle tickets, we are working with a few different designers and vendors, have a fashion theme, sell raffle tickets, and they're going to be donating goods at cost, and so we would use that proceeds from the raffle to support our programs that are happening.
And when again is the raffle going to be?
The raffle drawing would actually occur on May 18.
May 18.
And our goal is to have an event that evening which would showcase the designs that are donating the items at cost, and then individuals could buy their last raffle ticket that day that we would actually draw it on the evening.
Okay, so the raffle tickets will be available when?
The raffle tickets will be available as early as date, though I guess it depends on the state approval timeframe for the gaming license, but as soon as we have approval, by the state, we would begin to sell raffle tickets and have at least a month's time period so that we will culminate sales on May 18.
Okay, and where will this event take place? Well, I'm trying to give you an opportunity to advertise this, because you're a nobody.
The event is planned at our offices at 218-19 West 9 Mile Road.
And that's not Loser and Niner?
That's Loser and Niner.
In the office building next to the Uptown Hall and Market?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, and for the event, it will--
The event will actually be a fashion show event where the designers will show their wares, and individuals will have an opportunity to buy outright if they want from the designers, or to buy raffle tickets, and we would have a drawing at the event.
Okay, does the event cost, you have to buy tickets to the event?
The event is, there's no additional cost for the event except for that we expect all individuals that come to the event will have bought a raffle ticket, and if they have already bought a raffle ticket, they would buy it at that time, they could buy it at that time.
Okay, and does somebody want to contact you about buying a raffle ticket?
Yeah, they can contact our, they can identify on the website as well as contact the offices of the Torch of Wisdom Foundation.
Okay, and the website?
The website is www.towfinc.com.
Okay.
Did you want to repeat that?
Okay.
And, you know, I think the only--
Oh, I'm sorry, it's not worth.
Okay, the only thing you didn't answer is the cost of the ticket. No cost?
No, 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 for the raffle ticket.
The raffle ticket is $20.
They're $20 a piece of the ticket.
That's right. We were actually thinking about making it $20 for three raffle tickets, but some of the details were still working out.
Okay, I think we've given you a workout, and hopefully, people who weren't informed. So we have a motion on the floor, and call a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, good luck with your raffle.
Thank you.
All right, at this point of our agenda, we move on to communications, and our first speaker is Kelly Amato. Mr. Amato, if you would come forward.
Oh, that's mine, sorry.
Mr. Amato, I never deliberately root anyone, and I know when we last spoke at the last meeting, it was a very late hour, it was 1:30 or something in the morning, so maybe I was a little cranky. So my apologies to you. I did call to try and encourage you to, I hear your concerns, we've heard them at each time you've come, and what I called, the reason for my call was to encourage you to try and make your remarks, so something that's applicable to this, that this council could do. It was not to give you a hard time, it was to suggest to you that, we hear your concerns and your passion for this, but it would be helpful if you could steer us or guide us in how you think that we could in turn help you.
Sir, the better part of courtesy would be for you to just let me speak without continuously trying to censor me, as it is, the time limitations are very strict here.
Mm-hmm, they are.
Don't get to say much. What I have learned in the last 15 years of my life should have been taught to me conscientiously by all the instructors and physicians that teach the next generation of people for the first 15 years of my life. I'm just learning them now, and I would wish to alert other people to the truth of the matter that we've been deceived about for so long. So anyway, is my time going to begin now?
Your time starts right now.
Okay. I wanted to try to cover two subjects before you cut me off. One, the government deficit and the debt are a fraud on the American people. I point you to the revolutionary era statesmen, and look up the Constitutional Convention that was convened at the time to effectively amend the Articles of Confederation, but what the wheelers and dealers did was to scrap the Articles of Confederation and to set up the central government by passage of the Federal Constitution. I urge you to read the anti-federalist speeches in that historical record which is still in place. Anyway, the economy of this nation has been privatized, every institution, both with a public label or private label, has been privatized, we are under an illusion of public enterprise or is not, even these corporations that go public are not really doing public, they have stocks that are not sold in the same manner as the original intent was, per the principles of the republic as public institutions. Corporations are not public institutions, they're privatized. Though we track this, it's the owners of the banks and cartels that have taken and seized the wealth of this nation, everything right now is under receivership, and if we look at what's happening, more and more of us are being displaced from this economy, homeless ranks are growing, and with all this performance techniques that are Washington DC, it's all staged and scripted by the Hollywood script. This is not inadvertent or a mistake to use illegally, this is deliberate premeditated destruction of a people and an economy, and unless the good people rise up and resist what's going on, we are headed for a totalitarian disaster. And many of us who are now mercenary slaves, getting paid for the enslaves by taking our master's orders and running with them and not challenging the orders, we will be flat-out slaves without any pay. Does you want to eat today? Showed up and do as you're told. Black History Month, for example, black history has been a deception on most people. Civil rights are not the same as inalienable natural human rights. The Civil War was not fought to free the slaves, it was fought to consolidate greater control and power in the central government, the federal government. We now go to the federal courts to ask them to protect our civil rights because we are now 14th Amendment citizens, colored people, and has nothing to do with our complexion, has to do with the fact that we no longer natural free inhabitants of a free land, we are incorporated, how do they call it, 14th Amendment citizens under color of law. We are not real people, we are incorporated as an entity under this private commercial jurisdiction, we are human livestock, so to speak, and we're being hurted in the wrong direction. And unless none of us rise up and resist what's going on, revive the spirit of the American Revolution, think of people like Harriet Tubman, who said similar things like Patrick Henry did, she's not often quoted during Black History Month, she said, "I am determined that, you know, that I had the choice of two things, liberty or death, and if I cannot have the one, I will have the other, and no man shall take me alive." That's the kind of spirit that we need to revive in this nation if we are to redeem ourselves as a free people. We are headed towards disaster. My family is a victim of organized crime within the Central District of New Mexico's Family Court, and I note that the Family Court in this state as well is running the same scams. They are there to work just the way the Indian schools worked with the original Aboriginal Native Americans, to destroy the family, and there's other projects that coincide, to destroy the family, to traumatize people, and so that their issues control, to break off the traditions of the people from their heritage, and we have a heritage still in this country that's mostly forgotten by most people consciously because we're not taught. The revolutionary era was an extraordinary event in world history. We have forgotten it, it's not taught in school, I read for a blind law student in law school, and I taught in legal arts school in the 1980s, they do not study the principles of the republic in legal arts school. We are not taught the principles of the republic anywhere. Law school, case law, not law. If you look at Ralph Orzus's book, he's a retired New York State cop--
Our 15th second.
He issued a book called The Constitution That Never Was. He brings out there that the First Judiciary Act, which was passed two years after the Federal Constitution, essentially set up the king's bench and bar of this continent. That's why, oh, this nation, we no longer have lawful juries, we are big time camped with and American law association, unlawful controls--
Your time is up, thank you.
So-called law, what there is of it. Please let me clearly finish my thoughts--
No.
But I hope some of you with the mind and know the truth will investigate the record, it's in the historical record.
Thank you.
I could just share with you more about what I want--
The first speaker is Gerard Mullin.
You might want to turn off the microphone and insult me again like you did last time. That was a fake apology by the way, to get you before I speak.
Whatever.
Whatever.
My name is Gerard Mullin. I'm proud to say that since 1961, I've worked here in this city, and since 1968, I pay taxes here in my city, the great city itself, which happens to be a damn good city. My address is GerardMullin2012@gmail.com. Tonight, I am not here to talk about those nice guys from Walmart, the Planning Commission's favorite corporate criminals. Instead, I'm here tonight to make the following suggestion to council, that you folks. In order to encourage greater citizens' participation in Southfield City Government, I propose that council award an annual prize to the person who makes the most provocative presentation given at the council meetings during the communications period of the agenda. The prize, the prize would be that the winner would have their picture, a full-page photo, published on the cover of the Southfield Living Activities Guide, reenacting their award-winning performance before council. This photo will be placed on the cover of the fall issue of the guide. This would add needed variety to an already stale guide. We're all sick and tired of the same old photos, year in, year out. It's time for a change. For example, in the last four guides alone, count them four, as my friends in Montreal would say, ah, deux, trois, quatre. That's right, four plagiarized photos from the award-winning Southfield City Council. And to top it off, the last issue has a plagiarized picture of none other than council's favorite project, invested Carpenter Lake, also known as Denso Park.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin. Next, we have panel of Gerald.
It hasn't started the clock yet because I'm going to do exactly what Mr. Amato did, I'm going to dialogue with you before I start my five minutes. You know, on January 28, I was talking about something that I thought was very relevant, and that was about the Christmas list. You cut me off, that was rude. You have also told me in the past, "Sit down and shut up," that was rude. Mr. Fraser has also been rude to me. Mr. Fracchi has just been outright ridiculous, being-- Mr. Fercotti has just been outright ridiculous, being rude to me. And you know what? I have forgiven you all. You stand here, or you allow people to stand here and talk about things other than the public hearing, and you've held me to a different criteria. Now, I appreciate that because I like to follow the rules, and I like to be focused on my issue, but for all that you did to me, you better start doing some better regulating because I'm upset.
All right, your time is...
So I'm gonna start my five minutes right now, and thank you for that. My name is Pamela Gerald. I am, and I have been, an independent voice for Southfield. Voters, you have seen me at this podium week after week, addressing your concerns and problems for a long time. Voters, you've heard me say it's time for a change. If you are listening to my voice via YouTube or audio reproduction, I can be reached at P.O. Box 165, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five, or by telephone at two four eight three five two nine one eight eight. I am just a phone call away or a click away via email. Voters, whenever you hear a siren, someone in public safety is risking their lives for you, one of your neighbors, someone you know, or someone else in the city. Council, are we serious about public safety here in Southfield? How are we treating our police officers? Well, voters, let me tell you how this city is treating our police officers. Last year, this city went into arbitration with our police because the city refused to give them an acceptable contract. Our police officers have not had a contract since two thousand and eight, nor have they had a raise in about eight to ten years. Now, we talk about having a standard here in Southfield, yet we disrespect and humiliate our police officers and have dragged them through a lengthy arbitration. We pay an arbitrator, but we can't give our police officers a raise. We're doing more with less, but we pay an arbitrator, and we can't give our officers a raise. And Mr. Moss, you can dispute whatever I'm saying when you have a moment. Our police officers lost the arbitration. This is what our city took from our valued police officers, and I stand to be corrected on anything that I say. Number one, you dropped the pension retirement fund, so the officers now are only guaranteed about four percent regardless of how many years they work, and you, the city, make money on that four percent. Have any of these executive members working for the city taken or dropped their pension? I don't think so. The city used to pay into an annuity for our officers like they did for the city attorney and other executive members. The city took that five percent away from the officers because we're allegedly broke. Yet, members of the executive level of government here get free cars, free food, free gas, free trips, or even money towards a car if you don't have a car payment. This city spends a lot of money going to conferences, and what are you bringing back that's productive or creative to the city? Nothing, other than empty verbiage and gibberish. You're even using those trips possibly as a way of taking your family on vacation, and that's unacceptable. Why don't you do what Rachel Nannell does? She doesn't fly people into her show. She uses Cisco or teleconferencing. You guys are always talking about the internet and modern technology. Start using it. Number three, you took the longevity program or percentage away from the police officers they used to earn based on their service. For example, if an officer worked about thirty-five years, he or she would get a percentage based on the tenure. Now, you have duped and bamboozled our police officers by giving them a flat rate. So now, what is the motivation for highly trained, long-tenure officers to stay? Nothing. Who's going to teach, train, and mentor the new hirees? Oh, I'm sorry, we're not hiring any new officers. Why? Because that list that we had probably expired after a year or two. I don't know. You tell the public, and you tell me the correct thing. Have we been training any new candidates? No, we haven't. Voters, you've heard me say for almost a year that we are down thirty police officers in this city. We just might be down about thirty-two. I purport that because our officers did not fare well in the arbitration, or what should have been fair contract talks, more police officers will be retiring. Cadets normally are in the program for a year. We've got two cadets that have been in the program here now for three years. So when are we going to hire those police officers? None of you have taken concessions. Council, it's the police that responds within three to five minutes, not you. Council, the police risk their lives for the radio call, not you. You guys are putting our safety in jeopardy.
Thank you.
Council, you guys are putting our safety in jeopardy.
Please to...
Our police officers should not have to fight the administration and the bad guys on this street.
Uh, next on our agenda is the council portion. Um, oh, I'm sorry. My apologies, Mr. Rhodes. Please come on. Mr. Rhodes, I want to just mention before you begin your five minutes that since sometime now, you have come to us with the, and from your request to speak this evening, you indicated that you want to speak on the same topics. I want to advise you that we have heard you, and this is not the place to get your grievance addressed. I personally wrote you a letter on July seventeenth, one to your household, and advised you of the procedure for, if you feel that you've been treated unfairly by the police department, how that would be redressed. My understanding from the police department was that there was an investigation. Also, at our last, last time we were here, we talked about your rights in court, and if you feel that you've been treated unfairly in the court, how you may have that addressed as well. What I'm trying to tell you is, you know, we have heard you. We've made our suggestions to you as recently as last month, but again, I wrote to your home last July seventeenth. So I just wanted to say that before you begin your remarks and you have five minutes, state your name and address on the record.
Okay, thanks. Toby Rhodes, one seven zero zero one, New Jersey, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three five. Yeah, I recognize that you've heard me, and I understand that Southfield police are not elected representatives, and the community doesn't have any control of Southfield police. I've witnessed that firsthand. I didn't know you came to my house. I didn't know you wrote here, but I have no record of that, no knowledge of it. So I just, you know, I didn't know that. And, you know, I don't do this just because I'm trying to sway you. I mean, my issues are with Forty-Sixth District Court, and you don't control them, and then I don't know who hires the police. I don't really think you control them, and the city attorney's office, I mean, those prosecutors aren't elected either. I mean, all these people doing these things, I mean, they're not elected officials. I mean, Forty-Sixth District Court, the court administrator, the city attorney, Southfield Police, only one who's elected is William J. Richards, William J. Richards, the racist.
And I can't allow you to defame a person here who's not here to defend themselves, and this isn't the place for that, for that debate. So please do not call somebody out like that. I mean, if you have general issues with the court, I understand that.
Okay. Is this going against my privacy?
No, it's not. I'm giving you another, I'm watching the times that I'm taking. I'm interrupting you only to try and help you resolve or get somewhere with your issues because we've heard you. And I'm saying that unlike the previous speaker who didn't believe me, but I'm saying with all sincerity to you. You know, we heard you, we're concerned, there are avenues to address the concerns you bring to us. Okay?
Oh, I respect that. I mean, I'm not holding you responsible or anything. I'm just, you know, I just want to go on the record. I don't want it to be said that, well, no one said anything about this, no one told us, no one warned us. I want to be able to say on Monday, February twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen, I went on the record. I said what the problem was, identified it, and I'm not holding you accountable, but I'm just saying, I know people are gonna ask me later down the road when the consequences come, and say, "Well, why didn't you warn us? Why didn't you tell us? Why didn't you give us some advance warning?" I did it on all these dates, and this is what I said, and nothing was done, and so these are the consequences. So anyway, so, okay, yes, I'm not holding you accountable. It's just, you know, just going on the record, going in public. But yeah, the whole reason this started was because I was in my neighborhood walking and minding my own business, and I get attacked by the Southfield Police. Now, they're not elected officials, but I guess they have to show who's in charge. You see a black man, they're like, "Oh, no, what's he doing? We're gonna show him who's in charge." And one thing I noticed is that, that's where it all started. So I realized, if I can't get respect in my own neighborhood, and I've lived there for twenty years without any problems, and this is really a real problem here, and that was two thousand and nine, and I recognize, as I mentioned earlier, that I noticed the change in two thousand and eight because the financial system collapsed, and I recognize that really, Southfield is in some serious, serious trouble. I mean, back in, I think, the late nineties, Southfield was really something to me. I mean, it convinced me to stay. I could have gone anywhere in the country, and I said, "It looks like there's a future here." But I realized that once two thousand and eight hit, it became clear that Southfield is in some serious trouble, and unless somebody does something to get it on the right track, this place is doomed. Back in two thousand, two thousand and ten, when I started picking the Bank of America, I thought they might have a chance, but I realized, I just don't think there's any chance that Southfield can recover. You look at the Southfield Police, the way they treat black people, you look at the Forty-Sixth District Court, the way they operate, you look at the city attorneys off the way out, and there's still the black people in Forty-Sixth District Court here. And if you're confident, capable, and resourceful, why would you want to put your resources to an area where you think that's, it's gonna die? Because all they're gonna do is waste your resources, and then waste their resources, and then you're gonna be stuck with nothing to show for it. And so, you know, when I hear things that the Southfield Police aren't getting resources, I was like, "Now, that's a good start. Yeah, they don't deserve any resources because all they're gonna do is just attack the community with them." So I realized that Bank of America, Southfield Police, and the court are all trying to be burdens, drag the community down. Bank of America wants to wipe off the property values. When people wonder, "Well, where did they get the bailout money?" It came from, America wants property values, and that's why the property values will never recover until you get rid of Bank of America. I mean, how can you have a bail bank that you're bailing out? That makes no sense. They're in business to get the fresh new money. That makes absolutely no sense at all, and they don't even know how to handle their own business. I mean, they're making loans to decide, prove, does, and does not get along, and they can't even run their own business correctly. That makes no sense. You gotta have local banking if you want to be successful with banking, where they know the local communities, but it's all broken. The lending system in this country is all broken. Then you have the Southfield Police, they want to create debt. The base creates debt through loans, the police create debt through charges. They love charging black people and sticking them with debt so that they have to pay for all these charges. Always so frivolous, misrepresentation, loud misorder, um, uh, let me see, what's it?
Fifteen seconds.
Okay. And so, it's all about debt, and the court creates debt. So you have these three entities, the court, the police, and the base, dragging down the community to create all this debt, to guarantee their jobs, to guarantee their profits, to guarantee their business, and it provides no benefit to the community as we can see for the residential and commercial property values.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
All right, thanks.
All right, next we move on to the council portion of the agenda. I would entertain a motion for A, B, and C. Would you combine those together?
I'll move to support.
It's been moved by Mr. Moss, supported by Mr. Frazier, to approve the expense reports from Fercotti for attendance at the Economic Club of Detroit, State of State address, and again, the Economic Club of Detroit, that's on January seventeenth of this year. All those, any other discussion hearing, none? All those in favor? Thinking about my thing, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the show the, I mean, abstain from voting, the A, B, and C, please.
All right, we have four ayes and an extension on item A, B, and C under council. We want to move on to item D. This is the change of the starting time for the regular council meeting of March fourth. We are moving that starting time up to five P.M.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve the change of the starting time of our March fourth, two thousand and thirteen meeting from seven P.M. to five P.M.
Support my view.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Moss, made by Mr. Frazier. Any questions or comment? Otherwise, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are also adding two other items to the agenda, but the primary discussion topic that, so five P.M., will be the Downtown Development, sorry, report from them. We are also expecting later in the meeting, a representative from Thorpe Land, but primarily we're starting at five so that members of the DDA could attend the meeting with Mr. Frazier. All right, go on to number, resident letter E, which is to request, schedule a joint meeting conducted as a committee as a whole with the City Senator Advisory Board. This is another one of our communication outreach meetings that we've got several scheduled. This one is one of those unscheduled Mondays, April first. I'm looking for a motion.
So moved, support.
It's been moved by Mr. Moss, supported by Mr. Frazier, to schedule a joint meeting with the City Senator Advisory Board on April first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, any other items from council?
Mr. Ross? Yeah, coming off of the heels of our last televised meeting, there was a lot of interest in figuring out some next steps moving forward in how to bring right development to the city of Southfield. At our last committee, the whole meeting, our council president appointed an APOC committee, economic development focus, of which I will serve as chair and serve with my colleagues, Councilwoman Sylvia Jordan and Councilman Fercotti, along with our city planner, our deputy city administrator, our business retention director, and an official from the Career Center. We also will be making an appointment of one or two residents to have a resident voice on this committee, and somebody identified and working with the chamber to represent the business community. I've talked with our city clerk, so any interested residents who really want to be a part of the discussion of economic development in this city, finding useful ways to bring in developers to adequately use our land properly and really move this city forward. Now, we have the overlay district, we have some creative projects that I think our city planner's ready to discuss. Please submit an application. You can go to our city clerk's office, fill out an application, submit a resume, and our committee will be making a recommendation to the council president, who will subsequently make the appointment for resident representation to really move this city forward. So that's something that we're working on moving forward. With regards to some of the things that have been said about police support from this council, I, you know, I know that Ms. Gerald said she's awaiting my response. I don't have anything in depth, because I think she's expecting we talked over the weekend. And, you know, my feeling is, we had our police chief come to us about a month, month and a half ago, a half ago, to talk about adding a new police liaison to one of our schools here in Southfield, and the comment was, a question was asked of him, "Is this gonna take an officer off the beat for putting somebody in the school system, which is a valid request? Is this gonna take an officer off the beat?" And the comment that our chief of police made was that not only will it not, they're gonna be figuring out how to adequately staff this new position without taking officers off the street, but we're a city that is adequately and safely patrolled with the officers that we have. I think there's a theme, and especially in the last, you know, maybe fifteen seconds of Ms. Gerald's remarks, that this council is putting this city in jeopardy, and that's unfair. That's completely unfair. First of all, the arbitration process is a state-defined process. It's decided by an independent arbiter, arbitrator, that we have no control over the final resolution, and it's done by design so that management and union can come together with an independent conclusion. can come together, um, with an independent, uh, conclusion that, that hopefully is, benefits both sides. Uh, but, you know, this council is extremely supportive of our police department. I have a list of votes that we've taken over the past year, um, to really help our police department, help our chief of police, uh, adequately, uh, provide for the public safety in the city of Southfield. Uh, we have voted on March nineteenth, two thousand twelve, uh, to accept a grant to implement a real-time crime tracking and mapping system in order to better analyze data and trends to reduce criminal activity in Southfield. That was a unanimous vote from this council. On April twenty-third last year, we voted to provide new body armor to the Southfield Police Department, and a unanimous vote. On September tenth, two thousand twelve, we voted for the Southfield Police Department to accept the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant, unanimous vote. On October fifteenth, we voted to appoint, uh, Eric Hawkins as the new Southfield Police Chief, which, as, uh, my colleagues up here have noted, is doing a tremendous job, hitting the ground running, uh, as, as the new chief of police here, with having, already have twenty years of experience as a police officer in the city of Southfield, unanimous vote. January fourteenth, two thousand thirteen, uh, we voted for the Southfield Police Department to implement the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant, to provide the city with the opportunity to update technology for a law enforcement-specific live-fire judgment training module. And at that same meeting, we voted to purchase upgraded in-car video recording systems to replace outdated equipment. Uh, this council is, is in tune to the needs of our police department, supports our police department, differs to the expertise of our chief, chief of police, and provides him the support that he needs. What are the results? And I don't, I don't give the credit to the council for this, for these results. I give the credit to the police department, um, and the chief of police. This is from the South Oakland Eccentric on January twentieth, two thousand thirteen. All major crime is down in the city of Southfield. Robberies are flat at a hundred and forty-three from, uh, in the year two thousand twelve. Aggravated assaults are down from two hundred and thirty-seven to two, in two thousand and nine, to a hundred and fifty-six in two thousand twelve. That's a decrease of thirty-four percent. Burglaries are down from eight hundred and six in two thousand and nine to a low of six hundred and forty-three in two thousand twelve. That's a decrease in twenty percent. Auto thefts are down, five hundred and forty in two thousand and nine to four hundred and three in two thousand twelve, a decrease in twenty-five percent. So, you know, the perception that the actions of this council, the actions of our city administrator, uh, somehow jeopardize the safety of this city or the integrity of the police department, is quite frankly, not based in any form of reality whatsoever. And with regards to staffing, you know, we're down staff across the board in the city of Southfield. We've not laid off a single person, but we're down two hundred positions plus through attrition. Somebody retires, we delineate the work. I want to live in a city where we have results like this from our police department, and we still run an efficient, budgetarily sound department throughout the city, but in particular to our police department, so that you know that your taxes in the city of Southfield are adequately spent, um, and, and as a result, we live in a safe community, uh, with a well-respected police department, uh, and I'm not going to, I'm, I wouldn't accept anything less than that. And as residents of Southfield, um, I, I feel comfortable living here. I feel adequately, uh, protected, uh, and, and the, the crime, the downward crime trend is the proof of all of our hard work collectively with our police department, that we're moving in the right direction, in terms of public safety.
Mr. President. Uh, to Lance.
I am going to say something. I'm not going to talk about the police department, that portion of his eloquent speech. I'm going to talk about the business of this city, of what has happened, and the cause is the council for the business. Business, big business, is not going to come into this city anymore. All you're going to get is the kebab, is the cash checking, is the salons, just the small businesses that don't count very much. They count, but they don't pay much taxes. But if we don't get smart, if this council doesn't wake up, we are going down the drain because of the big business not coming to us. The business is the back gun, background, the backbone of most of the taxes in this city. They are not coming in. Most of this is propaganda. "I'm not talking about the police or anything," he said. "I'm talking about business only." And if we don't get the business to come in, everything else don't count. Not going to happen. It's not going to happen. They better wake up. They giving you a bunch of, the eloquent young man is talking, he's trying to convince you that it's not the business, but it is. The bus- we failed, not me, they failed you because of what they did to big business. We'll take it more as I go along.
Mr. Frazier, I think you're next.
Yes, I have, uh, three items that I'd like to, um, address. The, uh, the first one is brought to, was brought to my attention by, well, was brought to my attention because I drove on it, but it was also brought to my attention by a resident, and that is, on Greenfield Road, between nine and eight mile, on the southbound side, it's awful. It's all broken up. On the northbound side, it's really smooth. On the old park side, it's really smooth. Um, I, I'm not sure who maintains that, or who's responsible for Greenfield, I think, is it us? Or is it?
Through the chair, uh, regardless of jurisdiction, uh, follow on.
Well, the thing that I'm, that I'm looking at is, why is one side so beaten up and the other side good? Not so many people want to go to Old Park. But, uh, that was brought to my attention, and it is, uh, pretty bad. The second is, uh, another thing that was brought to my attention, uh, and it, it goes to the overall appearance of the city, and I know we are short of funds, and our budgets are really tight, and I don't think there's anything we can do at this point in time, but there may be. And what was brought to my attention is, all the dead trees in our parks. When you drive down the road, you see trees that lean over and, and all of it. It, it just, and I don't know if, if our, our plan and the unimproved parks is to let that happen, but it, it looks kind of unsightly, that, uh, there are so many trees that are leaning over, and I, and I don't know if they just need to be cut so that they fall to the ground, or, or what, but, uh, or if that's, if we don't do anything, because that's the point. Um, but, uh, driving around, um, it, it does look, uh, a little uglier. And, uh, and the third thing that, uh, I would like to do is, uh, on an annual basis, my family, uh, donates to, uh, a nonprofit organization of some sort, and we pass it around from, uh, one sibling to another. It just so happens that this year, uh, is my turn. My, my sister is the one that, uh, that, that picks out who, who is next on, on the donation, so, it's a family donation, we all, from the youngest to the oldest, we all chip in and, and, uh, make a collection, so, it's my turn this year, and what the family, uh, selected to do was buy, uh, gift cards for Meyer, and I would like to present to Mr. Sherratt to give to the Human Services Department, because I selected the Human Services Department, and if I counted right, it's a little over five hundred dollars here. Great.
We will be more than pleased to convey this, uh, tomorrow, uh, to Human Services, and, uh, if you don't mind, through the chair, uh, we'd like to take a tour, uh, of the roadway you're talking about, and the parks as well.
Okay.
Uh, so, we can, you know, come to, uh, some specific knowledge of what we can do to address these concerns.
Okay, the, uh, the gift cards, uh, because we go all the way from the youngest to the oldest, some of the gift cards, there are a lot of gift cards that are five-dollar gift cards, but they go all the way through that.
They all count.
Yes, they do.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's it.
Uh, Mr. President, can I have a word? Sure, Mr. Lance, you have.
I'm going to do a little bragging, too. We just had a holiday called Purim, similar to Halloween. In my family, my daughter spent two thousand dollars to make food packages and distribute it. Food packages, hundreds and hundreds of them, to the people of Southfield. My family did that.
That's great.
I know it's great. That's why I'm talking about my family, my family. Anybody else in the family know that?
Um, hearing none, uh, we'll move on to the mayor's, uh, portion of the agenda. First thing we have an expansion for.
Mr. President.
Uh, Ms. Lawrence, who attended the election official's, um, winter meeting, um, in Washington, um, Mr. Frazier.
I move that we approve the expansion tour for Mayor Lawrence to, uh, attend the winter meeting, and, in, uh, Washington, support it.
It's been moved by, um, Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Moss, to approve the mayor's expansion tour, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Madam Mayor, your vote, yours?
Yes, um, I want to thank everyone's generosity that we shared to the city, because this is a time where, um, we do need to understand it's about, uh, helping each other, since we've become a strong city, and to Mr. Frazier and Mr. Lance's family, thank you so much. Um, I do want to say, this is Black History Month, and because it occurs every year, sometimes people kind of let pass by, I appreciate the time, Mr. Frazier.
Yes.
I know. Uh, I do want to say that, uh, as African-Americans, um, we have white history, we have a strong culture, and Southfield is a community that African-Americans have chosen, um, as a place to have equality of life. Um, I'm very proud of my family and my heritage of being an African-American. The reason why, uh, Black History Month was created, I, I remember having some young, um, white kids ask me, "Why do you guys do Black History Month? Now, what's the purpose of that?" Well, those of you who are historians, knowing that history and African-Americans, for a long time, was not shared in our textbooks, and what we, was shared, uh, was just very brief, as if it was just a blip in history. But we, our forefathers and our story of coming, um, to the United States and our contributions are wide and vast, and we want to make sure, um, there was a time, I remember being a small child, and, um, it was very hard to even get an African-American idol. As a small girl growing up, you had to have white towels, and it was an identity, um, issue that went through, a lot of things had happened. I did live through racism, but I grew up hearing my grandmother talk about it, and similar cultures have the remembrance of some very sad times in history, but it's so that it won't be repeated. And also, it's a time for African-Americans to feel proud of the progress they've made. And I'm bringing this up, because as we talk about violence in America, we talk about the, uh, gun issue and gun violence, and so much of that happening in urban areas and black-on-black crime, um, that is not all African-Americans. That is a problem that we need to address, and all of us need to roll up our sleeves. I, I can't tell you how proud I am to be in Southfield and to show the world and be a model that, here we are, we have a city with a majority African-American population, living with a strong Jewish population, without any racial descent, um, to live in a community where the majority of our population are educated above a high school education, to have a, a strong middle class, to have a vibrant economic base here, and we are a majority African-American community, we have a strong housing base. We have survived an economic challenge that should have just sucked the light out of us, and it did. And so, while we have, um, this moment in the year that we celebrate Black History, I am proud to be an African-American, I'm proud to be the mayor of a great city, uh, that can show the world the accomplishments and the progress of African-Americans, but also can show a community that's diverse, um, Caucasian, Jewish, Chaldean, um, Italian, whatever you are, and we live here together, uh, the Martin Luther King dream. And so, in the, um, in this month, I want the young African-American children who are in our schools and in our community to stand proud of their heritage, um, to understand that they stand on the shoulders of kings and queens, uh, and that they should carry themselves importantly, that education is not a, um, it's not just a gift, it is our right, and it's for us as African-Americans, to get education is something so much set their life for, and to treat it with that kind of respect and passion. And we have the opportunity to continue in Southfield, with all the tools that we have, and all of the success that we have, and with these freedoms that we have in the United States, to continue to be a model. I just told a reporter, I said, "You know, you don't write about us, though, because we are not deteriorating, we're not, uh, uh, a city that deteriorates in a time, we're a, we're strong in the fact that we have survived, there's so much about this city, and we're starting to ramp up. Some of you guys have tax bills, and our property values are going up, our crime is down, and so many people want to stereotype this city and say things, and we have to constantly dispel this, and say, "No, that's not the, that's not the reality in Southfield." And so, we need to continue to hold our heads high. If they don't write about us, we need to continue to tell our story, because there's so many communities in this state that would love to be in a condition of Southfield, and we're not perfect, there's not a community here, and this, this state is perfect. But, boy, do we have a lot to be proud of. Doing African-American history, I can say that we're proud of our community here, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, next, we move on to the administration.
Got stuff through the chair, well-stated, uh, by our mayor, and, uh, also by, uh, Councilman Moss, uh, I'd like to comment on some, uh, of the, of comments that were made in the public portion, on the police department, uh, for, to begin with, discussing, uh, the Act three twelve decision is inappropriate, because it's not a published document. Uh, number two, um, what we don't want to happen is for the public to, uh, have any kind of unjustified fear that may be caused by some of the rhetoric that you've heard. Uh, I'd like to, for example, as a matter of public information, provide some comparative analysis. Uh, one of the, um, accepted measures of, uh, coverage, uh, in the municipality police department would be the number of officers per population, uh, meaning that the lower the number, the better, in terms of public safety. Uh, our numbers are, in this regard, better than the following cities. One, Ann Arbor, two, Farmington Hills, three, Lebonia, four, Royal Oak, five, Sterling Heights, six, Troy, and seven, Westland, just as a matter of public information. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Sherratt. Um, we'll move next to the attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. Uh, at December seventeenth, two thousand twelve, uh, committee, the whole meeting, council considered, uh, two ordinance amendments. One was to Chapter one eleven, nuisances of the code. Disordinance would add进去 Section nine point five oh A, entitled Bushes and Struggles- This ordinance would add into Section Nine Point Five O A entitled bushes and shrubbery. In general, this new ordinance would require that single-family residential homeowners maintain and trim bushes and shrubs so that the front entrance of the house and the front windows would be unobstructed from view from the street. Uh, the second ordinance amendment that was considered at that time was to Chapter Seventeen, garbage and rubbish. In general, this ordinance would require that refuge and garbage materials and containers would be kept, uh, in a manner so that they are not visible from the street prior to being placed on the street for collection on the residence's, uh, particular collection date. Um, both of these ordinance amendments were proposed by the Neighborhood Services Committee meeting of the council. Um, there was favorable reaction to both of these ordinances, uh, not only at the Neighborhood Services Committee, but at the, uh, council, the committee in the whole meeting. So at this point, um, those two ordinances, uh, appear before you for approval and introduction.
Mr. President?
Yes.
You want to go on a ten?
Yes, I would.
Uh, I move that we, we approve the proposal for this amendment to Chapter One Eleven, nuisances of Title Nine, Police Regulations of City Code, adding a new section, Nine Point Five Zero A, bushes and shrubbery of the City Code, and I move that it be approved, support.
Moved by, um, Mr. Moss, or Mr. Lance's discussion?
I'll always say.
Finish your.
I'm good. All right, it's time for the comments.
I have, I have a point here. The, um, you talked about the trash and the amendments to, to that ordinance, when it comes to some of the elderly senior citizens, and they can't put their garbage in the backyard waiting to, to bring it to the front, what, what do we do then, and what are they gonna do? They have to keep it where it's inside, of course, but they can't carry it out from the back to the front.
Well, the intent would be that it be kept within a garage, if there's a garage, uh, on the premises, shed, some other structure, in any manner, so that it is not visible from the street. That was the intent of the, of the ordinance.
Was it stated, was it stated and announced the intent of the ordinance? Do the people know about it?
Well, that was the whole discussion, and that was why the Neighborhood Services Committee raised this issue, was that there had been, uh, discussions with homeowners associations.
Will it be announced to everybody?
Absolutely, there will be. These, both of these ordinances would be conveyed to the residences through some kind of method of communication, cable, so that everyone's aware of these new changes that would be, also would be published in these.
Okay, now that is, uh, okay. Any other discussion, uh, on this? I would just add that, um, this actually generated from, uh, a survey of homeowners' association presidents, um, the Neighborhood Services Committee, a year ago, um, set up a survey, and, um, uh, both of these amendments are, are a result of feedback from, um, numerous association presidents. Um, if there's no other discussion, then I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Mr. President, next one?
Mr. President?
Mm-hmm.
I move that we introduce ordinance number sixteen oh four, support.
All right, it's been moved by, um, Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Moss, um, any discussion on this? Uh, hearing none, then I will call a vote, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I should miss more, anything else?
Mr. President? I move that, uh, we approve the proposal for this amendment of Chapter Seventeen, garbage and rubbish, of Title Two, utilities and services of City Code, by amending Section Two Point Six, placing refuge and curb. Support.
Okay, uh, this is the ordinance, uh, number correct?
Yes, well, well, we will, I just, or just after we approve this.
Right, okay. Um, moved by Fraser, supported by Moss, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now, I move that we introduce ordinance number sixteen oh five, support.
Um, moved by Fraser and Moss, once again, all those in favor?
Aye.
You said sixteen oh five, on my count, sixteen oh, wait a minute.
What, first was sixteen oh?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, you're correct, um, you're, you said it faster than I could write it. All right. Um, we've taken care of, uh, the request for gaming license, anything else, um, bank, under clerk?
No, we're all, thank you.
All right, um, we've addressed schedule issues, ordinances, uh, if there's nothing else, Mr. Crowe?
Yes, through the chair, um, I just wanted to let the public know that as part of the master plan process, we scheduled the meeting on Wednesday, March twentieth, two thousand thirteen, at six thirty P M., which will be held on the second floor of Parks and Recreation. This is general input on the master plan, and specifically, we will be focusing on the Southfield Road Corridor. So that is a public, uh, meeting workshop, and we encourage the public to attend.
Thank you very much for mentioning that, um, I think we mentioned it last meeting, but very repeating, uh, we are, uh, the planners holding a, a meeting, uh, and, um, feedback on, from residents on what they'd like to see on Southfield Road between twelve thirteen, and this is what Crowe states at, um, March twentieth, and the location is upstairs, Parks and Recreation.
That's second floor, Parks and Recreation.
Second floor, Parks and Recreation, and?
At six thirty P M.
Six thirty P M. Okay. Uh, thanks for mentioning that, if there's nothing else, then I declare the meeting.